2023 of the Westford Planning Board. This evening, we have all five members of the Planning Board present. Bob Schaffer is joining us remotely via telephone. So votes tonight will be taken via roll call. We also have Jeff Morissette, Director of Land Use Management with us, as well as Joe Giannowicz, Town Planner, as well as Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer. So it's a full house this evening. And we have a fairly large audience, so there must be something controversial on the agenda this evening with that we'll get going. As always, we start with open forum. Paul, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer. We'd like to make the public aware that our regional planners at the Northern Middlesex Council of Government are holding an InVision 2050 Public Forum. This will be their second public forum. This is about infrastructure planning for the future, roads, bridges, all the other different things with an eye towards sustainability, I imagine. That'll be on Wednesday, March 22, 2023, at 6:00. It's at the Wanta Lancet Mills in Lowell, Room 305. And you can also participate by virtual connection. And more information about that is on the website for the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, NEMCOG. And then also, if I could, Mr. Chair, as you're all aware, Beaver Brook Bridge was closed by the state. Got this close to having it stay open until we began construction, but the water levels dropped and they could see that it would all rust it out and they weren't going to take a chance, so they closed it. But we do have more information about the work going on there and what's happened at westfordma.gov/BeaverBrookBridge. And you can get updates and more information there as well.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I've seen a lot of questions coming up on Facebook groups and things like that about when that bridge-
What book?
Exactly. Joe, anything for open forum this evening?
Just if anybody is here for a 73 Brookside Road, 60 Pleasant Street, or 270 Littleton Road, those petitions are, they're looking to be continued without any discussion tonight.
Thanks, Joe. Jeff?
No, sir.
Great. I'll go to the Planning Board. Anybody on the board have any items for open forum this evening?
Nope.
I do. It's with some sadness that I am announcing that I'm going to be resigning from the Planning Board. The May 1st will be my last. Oh, don't you dare. And so town election is May 2nd. Yep. So I've already submitted my resignation to the town and I believe this will be on the ballot, so it's lots of fun. People should think about joining. Contribute to the town, right? So, so there will be, it's a three-year term to fill the rest of my term. And then after three years, if you have, still have fun, you would then re-up for five years.
Is this your third term?
Yeah, I think it is. Because I was appointed one year and then three elections. Yep.
Gotcha.
Thank you for your service, Kate.
Twelve years, Kate?
I am not out yet.
To that point, Mr. Chair, there will be additional meetings where we'll have the chance to regale our colleague.
We will.
Good, certainly.
I'll begin the list.
I might pay attention to them.
And Kate, I'll just, you know, we'll start the goodbyes by saying, thank you very much for your service to the town of Westford. And I know personally, thank you. When I joined this board six years ago now, you and all of the board members were great in onboarding me and showing me the way. So thank you so much for what you've done for the town and for all of us on board.
It's been a pleasure. Everybody's been fun to work with.
All right. Well, enough about that. So for now, we still have more time. Any, anything else? Oh, let's go to the public for open forum. Does anybody have any topics for open forum? Please step up, name and address for the record, please.
Can you hear me?
It'll probably, it'll, it should pick you up.
It should get you. It's for the cable.
I just have a question. Is the meeting being recorded or broadcast live?
It's, it's always recorded for Westford Cat, yes.
And it's usually live?
Okay. I didn't see lights on in there, so I didn't know if it was live and I-
Right there.
Light on the, light on the wall says we're live.
Right, because some people in our neighborhood were asking. I do have a request. A lot of people, I just heard about this meeting or one of the items this afternoon quite late, and sent a note to some of our neighbors, and nobody knew about it. And I have a request. We used to have public announcements in, legal announcements in the Westford Eagle, which is kind of defunct. And I know something was put in, the Lowell Sun, but a lot of people don't know that and they don't know where to get announcements of public hearings, things like that. So I'd like to make a request of the town, the boards, whatever, to have a little section on the town website called Legal Notices or something like that, where at least people can go and check. There was something there called Legal Announcements, but it wasn't, there's nothing there for the last several years. There's no place to go and you have to, in order to find out what's going on, you have to log into every single town committee that you're interested in and find out what their legal notices are. And it takes enormous amounts of time. It would really help and be very convenient.
I would also recommend, if you're interested, you can sign up on the town website to get emails that will tell you, here's the link to go to to see the agenda.
Yeah.
And the legal notice would be in the agenda? I mean, the-
Right. But for convenience, so people, instead of always getting inundated with mail, they know, I want to find out what's going on, you know, and they can go to the individual agendas, but I had to download the Planning Board and it's 27 megabytes today to get to find out what's going on. And by the time I got through all that, anyway, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, to Kate's point, residents, anyone can, can subscribe to any of the agendas or any of the meetings that take place in the town at www.westfordma.gov/subscriber. And then you can pick and choose Conservation Commission, zoning, the illustrious Planning Board, and you'll get notices, emails of all the agendas.
That's where you do it. You can also unsubscribe at any time if you find it's, it's too much. But that, that is the way currently, I don't believe the town clerk's office is compiling the legal notices and publishing those. But we do satisfy all the legal requirements per the Mass General law for all of your hearings.
Thanks.
Paul Vospa, under Texas Road. Just to follow up on that, I've been following a lot of the boards for the last 15 or so years, and getting the agendas three or four days before the meeting is not as good as getting the legal notices a month or so before the meeting.
So Jeff, could you perhaps follow up internally with the town departments and find out if there is a way that we could post the legal notices to the town website? Doesn't sound like a difficult request, but-
I'd be happy to discuss this with the town clerk's office. It makes the most sense because all of the legal notices are required to be stamped in by that office. So I can do that, but that cannot in any way be any substitution for any of the other requirements, but I have to, I'm happy to have that conversation with the town clerk's office.
Great. Is there anything else from the audience for open forum this evening? Please step up, state your name and address for the-
I just wanted to ask you to have people shut off their phones.
No. Okay. I mean, if people would like, you may shut off your phones. Okay. Or silence them, put them on vibrate.
I can't shut off my phone, Mr. Chair. I need to be available if they're contacting me for an emergency, so I can't.
She means like silence.
Oh, okay.
Silence.
Oh, silence. Put it on stun.
Put it on stun, exactly. Anything else for open forum? All right. We've gotten past open forum, let's check that box. All right, we're on to public hearing items. What I think we'll do first is why don't we continue the three items that are for continuance and then that'll clean up the agenda. So the first item under public hearing items is PB 2224, Site Plan Review Stormwater Management Permit at 73 Brookside Road. The applicant has requested to continue this item without discussion to March 6, 2023, here at Meeting Room 201, 7:00 PM at our next meeting. Is there a motion to do so?
Motion.
Motion in a second, continue PB 2224 to March 6. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Jumping down briefly to general business, Item A is PB 2225, A Preliminary Subdivision Plan at 60 Pleasant Street. The applicant has requested to continue this item without discussion to the March 6, 2023 meeting here in Room 201, 7:00 PM at our, the next Planning Board meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion. Second.
Motion in a second to continue PB 2225 to March 6. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Item B under general business is PB 2226. This is a request to authorize administrative review at 270 Littleton Road for a massage therapy services use at Aroma Spa and Laser. The applicant has requested to continue this item without discussion to March 6, 2023, 7:00 PM, Meeting Room 201 at Town Hall at the next Planning Board meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second to continue PB 2226 to March 6. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. With that, we will go back to public hearing items and we will start PB 2302, which is Site Plan Review at 359 Littleton Road, Suite 2A. Is there a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing notice?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second to waive the reading of the public hearing for PB 2302. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. All right, before we dive into this, I just want to talk about how we're going to run through this public hearing topic. So first, we'll put on the table, there's a request to reduce the fee, so I'd like us to have a general conversation as a board about the fee reduction, but not take action on that. We'll then go to the applicant for their, their comments and what they're looking to do. We'll then go to the public, we'll come back and address the, the fee topic based on whether we're going to continue it and what we think the order of magnitude of this is, at which point we'll take, take whatever action we're going to take. Before we start that, a lot of emails received, a lot of emails sent, and I know I read all the emails this afternoon and saw some things on social media, Face, Facebook is what it's called, Paul. Yeah. Saw a lot of conversation about this topic, and it seems to me, Jeff, that there is some confusion, so I think it would make sense if we maybe bring some facts to the table before we dive into this discussion.
Makes sense. Did you want to open the hearing before we talk about that?
It's a good call. Is there a motion to open the public hearing for PB 2302?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second to open PB 2302. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Okay, now that we're open, I would like to get a few things on the table because I think it will just make the entire thing go a little bit easier if we have put some facts on the table. So the first thing is, I saw several comments in emails and also online saying that, that they were requesting to change zoning. And that is not actually what the applicant is proposing to do, right? This is a change in use and the zone, underlying zoning is commercial highway and the uses for which the applicant is seeking, i.e., light manufacturing and retail sales to the general public are both permitted uses per the use table in the zoning bylaws. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And this is just a site plan review then? And Jeff, can you articulate a little bit of what site plan review means and what this board is able to take action on under site plan review?
Sure, Mr. Chair. So for the benefit of tonight's attendees and for those who may be watching from home, I just want to share a little info about the site plan review process. For those of you who may not be familiar with this, typically, site plan review establishes certain criteria for the board to look at, things such as the layout of the project, the scale, the appearance, the safety, environmental impacts, and it usually covers topics such as parking, grading, drainage, could be signage, utilities, screening or buffering, and lighting. And so the proposed use, as Chairman announced, it's allowed as of right under our current zoning bylaw. So that means that that use can happen where it is proposed to happen, as of right. They don't need any special permissions for it, they don't need a special permit. It's not a use variance, it's coming in as an approved use. However, the Planning Board throughout this process, they do have an opportunity to impose certain reasonable conditions of approval to shape the project, to make sure that it fits as well as it can with respect to that location in the area. So site plan review cannot be used to deny a project, it can only shape it. And in fact, our own zoning bylaw states in Section 9431 that the Planning Board shall review and approve the site plan with conditions they deem appropriate within 60 days of receipt of the application. So they don't have a lot of discretion here and they don't have a lot, their scope is pretty narrow in terms of their jurisdiction. So it isn't like where you have a special permit and a lot of discretion. So it's pretty a clear-cut case of minimal criteria.
Right. Thank you for the clarification, Jeff.
Sure.
Okay. With that, is there anything anybody on the board would like to add to those comments before we dig in? No? Great. Well then, yes?
Just like, like manufacturing.
Yes.
Because this is, just to confirm, this qualifies as light manufacturing?
The building commissioner, who is the entity in town, who is responsible for reviewing, administering, and interpreting the zoning bylaw, believes a portion of this proposed use qualifies as light manufacturing with not more than four employees. So the commissioner reviewed the proposed use, found that it fits neatly within those uses that the chair mentioned, and it is considered an allowed use by our zoning bylaw.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. All right. Now that we've level set, thank you for that, Jeff. So let's, let's, we've opened it up, so is the applicant with us this evening?
Morning.
Oh, please have a seat. Give us one minute, I forgot. Yeah, we should have a general conversation around the fee, so let's go to the board. No, you can, you can go ahead and step up, we're going to want you there in a minute anyway. So discussing the fee. So we have a request from the applicant to reduce the fee from $3,000 to $500. Does anybody have perspectives or opinions on that?
I was just curious as to how the amount, 500, was derived. Was there, was there any give and take with town staff on this, or is this just the applicant?
So what I will state is there was some conversation with the applicant. They had inquired since there was no construction proposed and it was a change of use of existing space inside, had anyone in the past sought a reduction in the application fees. And I stated, yes, they have. We pulled some examples, we found a couple that stated 500 where it was just changes in use. So I think that was the rationale for what the applicant started with.
Okay. Thank you.
Bob, any comments on the fee?
No.
Okay. Mike?
I think it's reasonable. We're not doing stormwater management calculations, we don't have engineering involved.
Yeah.
I mean, when we do this, it's generally that low fee.
Yeah.
It's in line with what we've done in the past, so no problem with that.
Yeah. I similarly thought a reduction made sense. I didn't think that, I was thinking maybe $1,000, given the fact that there is some level of, I think, more impact to town staff based upon the nature of the business, but I think we can maybe mull on that while we go through the conversation and then arrive at a decision at the end of the conversation. Great. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Jeffrey Steinbrecher. I live at 147 Kelton Street, number 510 in Alston, Massachusetts.
Great. Welcome. Do you want to give us a background on the project?
Absolutely. I'm an attorney. I've been an attorney for about 10 years. I have always enjoyed building things. I started with Legos with my father, I built motorcycle engines with my older brother, and computers when they became, came around, I'm sure you all remember that. And I became interested in firearms about seven years ago when I first got my LTC. And when all the courts closed during COVID, I looked into building firearms for some of my friends and I realized that in order to do this legally, I should apply for a federal firearms license. And I did so and received that, and then I applied for the local dealer's license and also did that. And something very strange happened. You see, when you're an attorney, most people aren't very happy to see you. And they're less happy to engage you. And I didn't think that that would matter very much to me, but it turned out it did. And, you know, when I could build a, an item for someone coming back from Iraq, or build something for a police officer that had been on the job for 20 years, and see how happy it made them, and how much pleasure they got out of it, it actually meant a lot to me. And while this is a side business, it's, it's something that means a lot to me. And I'm not interested in selling $250 Saturday night specials, or cheap, or, I'm not even interested in having a walk-in business. I plan to have an appointment-only business where everyone is checked out before they come in. We use the federal FBI background check system and we use the Massachusetts system to verify their LTC every time they come in the door. I only want to build interesting projects for, for good people. And in doing so, my tools are generally just Allen keys, small punches, and sometimes a rubber mallet if something really doesn't fit. We don't use any large machinery, we don't do any cutting. If metal bends, it's probably a mistake on my part and very expensive mistake. We basically collect parts from around the country and sometimes around the world, and we fit them together for high-end pieces for discerning customers, for, for people that would look at it like a piece of artwork that they could use for a very long time, or maybe gift to someone that they, you know, son or something to keep in the family. I thought I would quickly run through the criterion here for the benefit of everybody here. Site plan review asks nine criterion. The first bearing, being to minimize the volume of cut and fill, the number of removed trees, the length of removed stone walls, the area of wetland vegetation displaced, and the extent of stormwater flow increase, the site soil erosion, air and water pollution. If you could put up the, the image of the, the whole building. So I am seeking, there should be another one with the area highlighted. That's the one. So I am seeking a site plan review of 600 square feet of a second floor of a building which is not visible from the street. This building already benefited from site plan review and was built substantially similar to the designs which went through site plan review in August of 1986. We're not making any exterior changes. And we're not even going to put a sign up outside. My business is, like I said, appointment-only. We're barely going to have hours. I work as an attorney, I couldn't maintain hours because I have to be in court most days. So I can only accept clients that can schedule my time for in advance, and with those people I can be sure they know how to find us. But I would appreciate it if no one else knew where we were. I think that's part of the security. The next point is to maximize pedestrian and vehicular safety. We only anticipate at most three to five people per day, and we would schedule that so that they would come at different times. Mind you, that's the most we've ever seen. Most days, we might see one client, and some, and many days, we'll see no clients. Many days, I won't even be there, though I may do my legal work there at some point. It's nice to have an extra office. I am well-connected with the local FedEx and UPS people and will work out a deal with them so that anytime they come to deliver something, I'll be there to receive it in person and make sure it's safely transferred. I've worked with them before. We expect no more than, you know, three medium-sized, one-person transportable packages at a time for shipment. Not that many shipments because frankly, we just don't do a high volume. We do only individual pieces built for individual people. The majority of our business will be during daylight hours. I'm thinking we'll see people between 11 and 5. The building closes soon after that anyway, and I don't approve of this kind of business after dark anyway, I think. Though the building has many exterior lights as well. I have requested a review from the Westford Police Department for our onsite security plan, and I'm working very closely with Chief Mark Chambers. And I've had an initial meeting with them, they walked through the entire property, and we set up a very long list of security points. And I have submitted to the board and also to the police chief and agreed upon the fact that I would store no weapons or no firearms there until the security plan has been completely implemented to the full approval of the Westford Police Chief. I believe in security and just want to be a good member of this community. I noticed that Littleton has put forward rules of this nature, but I believe I would be the first gun store to work this closely with the local police, the local fire. We just had an inspection by a fire engineer to make sure that we had an acceptable fire suppression system. They made some notes, which we'll get on very quickly. I'd be happy to turn over that information as well. Obviously, if someone had asked, but I just want to say this very, very clearly, there is no test firing onsite. There's no bullets entering guns onsite. In fact, we don't even, at this point, we don't even sell bullets. There's no reason for them to be onsite. They just don't make enough money. If we ever did intend to, to sell bullets, it would, we'd go to the Westford Police Chief and to the Westford Fire Department and ask how they would like us to store them. And we would make sure to follow the Massachusetts IBC 2021 code on storage of ammunition. Next one is to minimize the obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. Again, we're only looking for site plan review for a 600-square-foot office on the second floor of a building that is already benefited from site plan review. And we'll be making no exterior changes, no signage, we're not making any changes to the existing parking. In fact, we should be making no changes to the exterior of the building. Minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage, and other outdoor service areas viewed from public ways or premises residentially used or zoned. Again, we're not going to do anything outside, we're certainly not going to store anything outside. We're not making any changes to the parking here. This building already has parking right next to the door that we would be using, another set of parking spots in the front, and then a large parking area in back. We'd be making no changes to the parking there. And with our very small clientele, you know, spaced out over the week, I don't believe we'd be adding any traffic to the area that would be noticeable, or certainly wouldn't overcome the parking that the, the rest of the building needs. Next one is to minimize glare from headlights through plantings and other screening. Again, we will not be operating at night, and we will be using heavy curtains on the two windows that we have on our room. And otherwise, we will be making no changes to the exterior of the building for additional people coming in. The next one is to minimize the lighting intrusion through the use of such devices to cut off luminaries confining direct rays to the site with fixtures mounting not higher than 20 feet. Again, we're not making any change to the exterior of the building or the lights that are already there. There'll be no change or impact to this criterion from the previously approved site plan review. There'd be no change or impact to this criterion from the previously approved site plan review. The light plan was already benefited from site plan review. The lights were approved, uh, on the August twelfth nineteen eighty-six meeting of the Westford Planning Board. The next one is to minimize unreasonable departure from the character and scale of the building in the vicinity as viewed by the public ways. Could you put up the picture of the overshot? So this building, we chose it because it has a large amount of trees blocking it off from a view from the public. And we would not be making any changes to the exterior of the building, I, I don't believe. And beyond that, we, we would not be using any heavy machinery or anything that would make noise that would be able to be heard outside the building. The first floor of the building has a large printing press that is almost continuously running. And, uh, that would make much more noise than anything that we would do. The next one is to minimize contamination of groundwater from onsite wastewater disposal systems. I don't think that, uh, myself using the bathroom will contribute greatly to the wastewater. I promise not to use it more than twice in a day. If it helped. I am getting older though, so. So I looked greatly into this because, um, my, my wife is very into green planning. And I found that, uh, first off, in our business, we don't use any harmful chemicals. We use, uh, simple green for cleaning. We use, um, for lubrication, we use something called Frog Lube, which is a veteran-owned business that's USDA food grade. The only thing that I could find was some of the accessories that we sell use, uh, CR two zero three two batteries. And though these are sealed, they do contain a small amount of lithium. But again, that's point one zero nine grams per battery. And, uh, would be sealed inside the batteries. We're certainly not cutting these batteries open. And they would be inside packaging as well. So, um, I do not believe that we'd contribute in any way to the wastewater here. The next, uh, criterion is to main and accept, maintain an acceptable level of traffic service, volume, and infrastructure, which meets the goals of the master plan, the Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Manual, Route One Ten Master Plan, the Sidewalk Master Plan, and the Town Adopted Master Plans. Again, we're, we're planning to see three to five customers, uh, on days that we're open, which could be as little as two days a week, sometimes as many as three, depending on the, the amount of time I'm able to be there. The customer, the people would be between eleven and five P M. And, uh, I do not believe that we would make any significant change or impact on the criterion from the previously approved site plan. And the last one is to, uh, encourage alternative methods of transport, transporting people through public transportation, car pools and van pools, bicycling and walking, rather than near-exclusive reliance on single-occupant vehicles. While I understand that encouraging public transportation is a priority for the planet, and I agree with it, uh, due to the nature of our business, I'm not sure that this criterion applies.
Great.
If there are any questions, I definitely would like to be answered.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much for the overview. Uh, I'm sure the board may have some questions for you. So, um, Jeff, anything we should know before we go to the board for comments?
No, Mr. Chair.
Great. Who would like to go first? Bob, would you care to comment first?
I guess, um, one of the questions I have, I know that the, uh, safety plan is still in review with the, the, the police. But I guess one of the concerns I have is what would be required in terms of safes and other hea- heavy storage, uh, lockers, uh, for the facility? And I'd like to know if the town engineer, uh, has evaluated, um, the loading of these, uh, types of items with respect to the structure of that building.
So, uh, I don't want to get too deep into the security plan in, in a public forum. I, I've been advised not to do that by the police chief. But I do want to say that there have been excellent advances in security and that we no longer use, uh, large, heavy safes which don't actually really provide any security. Uh, there are new lighter ways of maintaining secure access that, uh, we are spending quite a bit of money on at the, um, suggestion of the police department. There should be no issue with weight. Um, we don't store many objects onsite. The number that we would be working on at any particular time is quite small. In the, the nature of maybe five or ten projects at a time, at most. With the, the amount of, I, I could get you, uh, a weight limit on what we'd be using. But, you know, what we have is basically some accessories, a build table, some hand tools, a desk, a TV, uh, and the security apparatus.
For the record, Mr. Chair, Paul Sterrett, town engineer, to answer Bob's question, that would be the purview of the building commissioner who would review, uh, floor loads and, uh, as part of the building permit.
Great. Thanks, Paul.
I appreciate that, Paul. You tell me if any material has been submitted at this time to the building commissioner for his review?
So.
Yep.
The applicant would require, um, site plan approval before he can submit an application for any fit up? Sometimes he may be able to submit an application to gather initial feedback from the commissioner, but he would not be able to proceed with that process without the requisite site plan approval? And maybe the applicant can speak to whether or not he submitted an application to the building department?
Uh, I've been in constant contact with Mr. Henry Fontaine. He was the one that suggested site plan review. He has not asked any questions about weight-bearing issues, but I would be happy to answer them. It should not be an issue. We certainly don't have any heavy machinery nor heavy product nor anything that common office wouldn't have.
So Bob, I, I had that we would be conditioning this, that the security plan is fully approved by the Westford P D. Do you, I mean, it sounds like, from Paul's comments, the, prior to the issuance of the building permit, if that security plan required the installation of heavy equipment, that seems like that would be reviewed as part of the building permit process.
I would anticipate the building commissioner would be on top of that use.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the answers. Yeah. That, that addressed my concern. Thank you.
Okay. Yep, the town engineer is correct. I appreciate your comments, but it really falls under building code more, not zoning bylaw.
Right.
But it would get looked at as part of the process.
Yep.
Right. Okay.
So, I'm good. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Kate?
Okay, thank you. So, um, the fire department reviewed the sprinkler system? That was in your, in your.
The fire department has asked us to have a fire engineer review the sprinkler system.
But it has not been done yet.
Uh, it was done on Friday and we're waiting for the full report.
Okay.
Uh, what he told me was that we would have to move one sprinkler head to be fully within code. And I, obviously, we will do that.
Okay, thank you. I did drive, I know, I know the building. I've been to, uh, use lunch viewing before, so I drove around the building. The only comment I had, um, because it was daylight, I couldn't tell if there were any exterior lighting on the backside of the building. I know that's not your problem. It's the building owner's problem. But I was just curious to find out if there were any lights, exterior lights on the backside.
There are. We submitted some pictures of exterior lights during the night.
Okay, I wasn't sure what side of the building was what. So that's, I know that's yours. Yeah.
That's the, the entrance that we would be using. That is from the street. That is the back, the other side, back of the building.
Is that like one eighty from you or is that?
Yeah, it's like if you went straight through the building.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay.
And, um, that is the part of the building that faces toward the street. And that's, uh, just a little bit further away, the, the same entrance I would be using. My, my window would be up there on the upper left.
So do you have, okay, so I see a light to the right. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Which is the back. Good. Thank you.
We were worried about that as well when we first looked at site.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for your review of the site plan criteria. I was much more generous. So I was thinking A through G don't really apply. But I, I, I agree with, I'm fine with your responses and if they end up being in, in the order of conditions. I didn't have any problems with them. I just had some things to, when we get talking about conditions and such. So I'll, I'll wait for that.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yep. Mike?
Just if you could, in a couple minutes or less, just explain what you have to do federally and within Massachusetts in order to do what you're doing?
So, um, the first thing one must do is apply for a, uh, federal, uh, oh-seven firearms manufacturing license. That's different from a regular store which applies for an oh-two F F L license. That oh-seven F F L has to be attached to a location. And then, once you have your location, you apply with the police department for what's called a dealer's license. Each dealer's license is controlled by the individual town. So for instance, while I had an F F L and a dealer's license, uh, by moving towns, I had to give up my dealer's license. And then I would move my F F L to my new location and then reapply with the town's police department for a new dealer's license.
And, and does the, does the federal government do any safety checks? Or do they do any inspections of?
They do incredibly thorough background check. They do random safety checks. They, the town police department, uh, does a yearly inspection and SNAP inspections. They have access to all of our paperwork. They see all of the background checks that we put through. They see everything that comes in and goes out. We use a program called FastBound, which basically is the equivalent of a bound book. It tracks every serialized item, what comes in, what happens to it, and who it goes out to.
How long have you had the, the federal license?
About a year and a half now.
All I have done.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Darren?
No, I think we, uh, you've got some conditions to talk about, but I think in terms of the site plan review, I have no additional questions.
Great. I have a, a few more questions just about your business. So talking about the paperwork you have to file, can you go into some more detail about that? And is that paperwork stored onsite?
So, um.
Specifically, I guess what I want to understand is when you sell a component, what are you obligated to do to document that? How quickly do you have to turn the paperwork in? And is the documentation stored at, on the premise?
Okay, so when you sell a serialized component, something that is or could be a firearm or a significant piece thereof the firearm, the first thing you would do is when the person comes in, you would ask to see their L T C. And then you would run that through the Massachusetts M I R C S system to make sure it was valid up to that second. Then, once you were sure it was valid, then they could come in. And, uh, then, let's say they, they chose to buy a product X. Then, uh, they would fill out a piece of paper called a forty-four seventy-three, which is a federal document which, uh, makes them put down all of their information, the information on the item, the serial number, and the description of what they're purchasing. Then it makes them answer a number of questions, uh, mostly that, you know, the item is for them, it's not for someone else, that they've, you know, haven't been arrested recently, that they've never been dishonorably discharged. Uh, there are about eighteen or so questions that they have to answer. And they give that document to me. And along with their L T C and their driver's license, which I made copies of, then I use the FBI, uh, criminal background, uh, check database, which is called the NICS database. And I run them through a check. And one of three things could happen. They could get what's called a proceed, which means that, uh, their, their background check is perfect and they could leave with the item today. Or they might get what's called a delay. Wherein of, uh, the FBI and their wisdom decides they need some more time to look at the background check of the person. And, um, then the person can't leave with the item. And, uh, generally, in three to five business days, they'll give us an answer whether we can, you know, affect the transfer or whether we cannot affect the transfer. And then the last possibility is they could get a denial where, uh, they would not be allowed to take the item. And the item is never in their possession until the full approval comes through. Then, um, the transfer would be entered into my bound book so that you could trace the item all the way from its manufacturer, through the, the distributor, to me, to the person. We get things, uh, let's say the police recover a firearm. They ask for something called a spot trace, which they send the serial number to the manufacturer through the A T F. And the A T F tracks it through each of the steps. And we have to be able to have all the paperwork for them, uh, including the forty-four seventy-three, the both background checks, copies of their license and L T C, should one of these spot checks come through us. We store the paperwork. We are required to store the forty-four seventy-threes onsite. I also keep digital copies, which I store in an encrypted cloud. My background is computer forensics. Somehow I got into law thinking it'd be fun. Um, but yes, we keep them in, uh, in an encrypted cloud. And, uh, our bound book is by nature online as well.
Okay, so the paperwork is onsite, but there are electronic copies for all of this documentation? Okay, great.
Can I, and everything gets transmitted elec- electronically immediately to?
The FBI.
FBI and whoever else gets it. In a form where they can easily just put it in a database? Or does somebody have to transcribe it?
So, um, the FBI get the background check immediately. They see that person A has requested a background check. That goes to them immediately. The forty-four seventy-three, uh, stays with us until the A T F asks for it. But the transfer goes directly to FastBound, which they have access to when they want it.
Thank you.
Gotcha. So you mentioned that this was the process for serialized components, right? Or full firearms?
Anything with a serial number on it goes through this process.
Right, which begs the question, in your business, do you sell any unserialized components?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Uh, I've never dealt with so-called ghost guns or what are they, they're called eighty percent lowers. Uh, I believe that is just ridiculous and huge trouble. I, I can't imagine someone would think it would be safe to fire something that had been drilled out in someone's kitchen.
So do you sell any components in your business that would, in the wrong hands, be able to make a weapon that's illegal in the state of Massachusetts?
So, we do not sell to people who do not have an L T C.
Okay.
So, um, if someone wanted to buy a barrel, they, we would check their L T C. Because that's not a serialized item, we would only check to make sure that their L T C was valid right that second.
Yep.
And then they'd be able to purchase that. Now, if they had somehow acquired. Now, if they had somehow acquired, uh, a lower receiver and the other parts necessary through another way, which would be strange because they could just buy them with that LTC, um, that part could, you know, like Legos, could be used. But we do not do a lot of that type of business. We sell mostly fully formed items. Um, I.
So I guess what I'm hearing in your response is not a no, it's a yes, but we try very hard not to sell those components to the kinds of people that might do that.
So, because of the nature of how parts can be used.
Yep.
I cannot in good conscience give you a no.
Right.
I can only tell you that we work very hard to make sure that that does not happen.
Yep.
But those same parts could be ordered online with a credit card and shipped directly to your house.
Right.
So we're not, by doing this, we're not, um, creating an end run around anything in fact. We ask for much more requirements than your local website.
Right. Yep, got it. Okay, I'm on to, um, conditions as well.
Sorry, uh, one more second.
Sure.
We don't sell any eighty percent parts.
Yeah, that's good.
Or any parts that.
Eighty percent parts?
That is the, the tagline for what most people would know of so-called ghost guns.
Untraceable components.
Yeah, uh, or parts that could be milled out and used for something else. We don't sell any components that could easily be converted to full auto weapons. We don't deal with any of that.
Yep.
Uh, and we pride ourselves in that.
All right. Okay, do we want to talk about conditions now or would we like to go for public comments?
Public comments?
Public comments before we talk about conditions? Why don't we do it?
Just tell them, yeah.
Okay, uh, here's how we're going to do this. We are going to go to the public. There's a lot of you here to make comments. So, uh, obviously what we always ask is you come up, you state your name and address for the record, uh, say what you'd like to say and, uh, and then, you know, be concise. Um, we are always looking for new information, so if you have comments that are very similar to what somebody else said, but you'd like to get them on the record, you can just step up, state your name and address for the record and say, I, I, you know, echo the comments that were stated earlier. That's all you have to say. You don't have to say the same thing again. Um, so with that, floor is open if anybody would like to comment.
You just have to be near it.
This is very funny.
Yeah.
This, this is Donally Delmar, uh, Dunceble Road. Um, this gentleman has made a whole lot of comments that make it sound like it's a hobby. I'm really sorry he didn't take up stamp collecting. But, um, I would like, I would encourage the board to make some, uh, sort of make him keep his word and have limits on his approval. He says two or three days a week he'll be open. Um, please, if that's the case, put it in writing, um, on a condition. The hours that he talked about, please put it in, put it in, in a condition. Do you have a three D printer?
No.
Good. Um, uh, if he's going to have some employees, which I'm not clear that it said he could have up to four, but, uh, if he's going to have employees, then there's going to be end customers, there'll be some impact on the parking. He says no sign. That could change in the future. There might be walk-ins. Do you sell ammunition?
At this time, we do not sell ammunition. I'm sorry, should I be answering questions?
Uh, no, you're actually through, you're both supposed to come through here, so.
I apologize.
Do you sell ammunition?
Uh, what we heard is that he does not sell ammunition at this time.
Okay.
And, and if it makes you feel better, I already have a condition of approval, uh, written to that effect.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you so much.
We already have ideas for everything you've mentioned so far.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to close with, um, the, the Beal said happiness is a warm gun. I don't agree. Thank you.
Thanks. Next. Good evening.
Uh, good evening to the board there, Chair.
Good to see you.
Chauncey Chu, Green Needle Road. Just have, I have a number of questions actually, but seeing the size of the crowd, I'll eliminate to maybe three or four.
Pick your best ones.
Yeah, I'm going to. First one, a minor one here. According to the Boston Globe the other, a few days ago, uh, Mr. Steinbecker was evicted from his prior location over there at the mill at Littleton. Should we find out why? Get his side of why he was evicted? If that has any relationship to getting approval for this location?
Um, do you care to comment on the nature of why he had to leave the Littleton location?
Um, I had a long conversation with the writer of that article. I was never evicted. Uh, no, there's no commercial eviction, never went to court, didn't occur. In fact, I maintain a premise there, uh, up into this month. That we, I had been seeking to leave Littleton for quite a while. So when someone left a note on my car that said, "You're the type of Jewish attorney that gives attorneys a bad name," uh, I figured it was time for me to go. And, um, I started looking months ago, but no, I was never evicted.
Thanks. Mr. Chu, please.
Yes, I appreciate the earlier comment that he will not sell any receivers, eighty percent receivers, lower receivers, so maybe that should be a condition that no sales of any components can be assembled into either an automatic long gun or a pistol.
Yeah, gonna have to talk to my friend Jeff about that. I understand where you're going to. I don't, I don't think we can either, but I, I hear what you're saying.
The major point I wanted to make was, in his explanation of the application there, he said, "Most of his business has been gotten by word of mouth." He does do some heavy advertising, I understand, again, from the Boston Globe article, where he does advertise automatic weapons. And I have a number of photographs if I could.
Sure.
Copies of these ads, so-called ads from the Boston Globe. And these are all automatic.
May I answer that?
Just, let me, just hold on. Yeah, I, I'm coming to you.
Somebody, Mike?
Yep. Thank you.
Um, okay, I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna go to the applicant for the, for the answer. So, so I think what I believe I read the same article as him, I guess you probably advertise on social media platforms. I think it was Instagram is what was cited in the, uh, in the article, yeah?
Yes, uh, we have a, we had an Instagram account. Uh, it's currently private, probably remains so. All of the photos on there, we deal with people all around the country. Uh, none of the, uh, pictures on there are of automatic weapons. They're all semi-automatic. Uh, modern sporting rifles. Uh, none of them, uh, would be sold in Massachusetts that don't meet Massachusetts laws. In fact, the Massachusetts definition of an assault rifle comes from the, uh, nineteen ninety-three adoption of the two thou- or sorry, the two thousand and four adoption of the nineteen ninety-three federal assault weapons ban, which says an assault rifle is a rifle that has a, um, either a threaded barrel or a flash hider, a bayonet lug, a grade launcher attachment, a pistol grip, or a collapsible or foldable stock. And it says an assault rifle is a rifle that has, uh, two or more of those features. Nothing with two or more of those features has ever been sold in my shop in Massachusetts. We've never dealt in automatic weapons. I've never even held one, actually. I think, uh, when it comes to modern sporting rifles, that, uh, the point is to be accurate and, um, you're never accurate with full auto fire. It just wastes a lot of money.
Okay, I must be a little naive, but those look like automatic assault rifles.
Yeah, I think the tricky piece is, uh, I think a couple of, uh, component switch outs and you can make, you know, take something from semi-automatic to fully automatic, so I think you can't really tell by looking at it from the outside unfortunately, so.
You'd have to replace the whole lower section of that rifle. They're built specifically so that an automatic sear won't fit in them.
Also, if you look at the curved magazine, I think those are greater than ten-shot magazines, which is prohibited by a mass law. Okay, so moving on.
Well, so let me, well, actually that begs a question. So do you sell pre, I guess, grandfathered components?
We have.
Yeah.
We have, we have onsite.
When those were manufactured, is my understanding.
What you're asking is the difference between a magazine that was manufactured before or after nineteen ninety-three. The federal assault weapons ban went into effect under Bill Clinton, um, in nineteen ninety-three and grandfathered the magazines that had been done before that. They're not a large part of our business. We don't have any now. But even so, uh, when we advertise to people outside of Massachusetts where these things are legal, we do use them in photographs. And it's legal for me, a person who has an FFL license and a dealer license to have these items. The problem with social media is that you're projecting to a much larger audience than a local audience. Uh, in fact, if you look at, uh, most websites for local gun stores, they'll advertise many things which are not legal in Massachusetts, but they do that because they ship them to people outside of the state.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's impossible to tell where the person is coming from when they view your website. You can only make sure that they follow the law if they come see you in person.
Again, this chair.
Yeah.
According to his narrative, he is targeting Massachusetts. So, whether he's advertising cover the country, he says he's targeting Massachusetts.
Yeah.
And the last point I'd like to make is the, the photographs that you have there do contain his logo, which is Legal Arms Company here.
Yeah.
Um, again, getting back to whether these are defined assault weapons, Massachusetts prohibits the sale of assault weapons.
Right.
So even though there's, this, uh, ban is in dispute, that's what the current law is. So I would make one of the conditions that absolutely no assault weapons are assembled from components, including the lower receiver, the eighty percent lower receiver, or the sale of a completed weapon.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Question, so do you, so, so you might manufacture firearms and then ship them out of state?
Yes, we've done that before.
Yeah, and so is it possible that you would, uh, assemble an assault weapon and then ship it out of state? Are you legally allowed to do that in the state of Massachusetts?
We are legally allowed to do that, uh, as an FFL and an oh seven manufacturer.
Okay, so if that is what you are asked to build and you're putting that together, um, does, when you are done and that, that item is completed, does it ship out the same day? Or does that ever have to overnight for a day or two, uh, in, at your shop?
So, uh, the process for shipping a firearm is very important, actually. What we do is, should someone contract us from, say, Wyoming or something, they would have to find a federally licensed gun shop near them where we would overnight the completed firearm to the, the gun shop. Then the person could then go to that gun shop, go through the required background check, fill out the required forty-four seventy-three, and then acquire that firearm. We ship, never ship direct to a consumer.
Yep.
The background check always has to happen.
Gotcha. So if that were to happen, the, the answer to the question of when you're, when you're finished with your assembly, that ships same day?
Yes, we try to get it out of there.
All right, uh.
We don't get paid until it.
Yeah, we can go back for more public comments if people have questions?
Jocelyn Bishop, Groton Road. Um, I'd like to go even further than my colleagues as far as the requests that I have tonight, which is not to put certain limitations upon this gun shop, but to completely not have this gun shop come to Westford. When there was a recent shooting, um, one of the mothers said, "Every child is our child." This is my child. I'd like for you to look at her and think about your own children, whether you would feel safe with your children in these schools with a gun shop around the corner. I do not personally. I would also like to point out that this is in reference to changing the, um, classification of the, um, of the building as far as the zoning is concerned. This is not, this is not what Westford is standing for. The asphalt plant got approved under light manufacturing. I live on Groton Road. I can assure you, as the asphalt trucks go by, it is not light manufacturing. It has not been limited the way it was supposed to. And if that's the case with an asphalt plant, what are you gonna do with a gun shop?
Yep, um. Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Stephanie Granger, Three Churchill Court. I'm speaking both as a resident and as the Chair of the Board of Health. I absolutely one hundred percent oppose any gun shops in the town of Westford. Adolescents who commit suicide do it with a family gun. Access to firearms is associated with risk for completed suicide and being the victim of homicide. Access to a gun triples the risk of death by suicide. Access to guns significantly increases the risk of death by homicide for women. I could go on and I'm happy to. I understand that it is possible that unfortunately, once again, our zoning bylaws are failing us in keeping this town the town that we want it to be. And if indeed that is the case, I understand the pickle you are in. However, at the very least, you do not need to decrease the fee that this applicant is asking for. It is a new business. We don't have any others in town. Set the precedent now. Don't make that bar low. I know I've done, we do this on the Board of Health. You have different reasons for it. This applicant will increase the costs to the town, both legally, as is demonstrated by the various arguments that have been brought up by other residents, and because we will have an increase, all studies demonstrate that gun shops in town cause more problems with gun death and violence. We will have an increase to our police, to our fire, to our health department, to other responders. This will cause problems to our town, so if you cannot ban it, then don't make it easy for him or others. Thank you.
Hi, um, you might have already received this question, but I didn't hear it in the explanation. There's no such thing as a commercial, um, convict, um, um, eviction. So, um, it, it was written up, at least in the Globe, that had something to do with the site and some of the work being done there, so I don't know if you could speak to that further?
Yeah, just before he answers you, can you state your name and address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, Jimmy Hall, Rose Hill Road.
Great, thank you.
Sorry.
Would you please answer the question?
Sure, there was no legal eviction or other kind of eviction.
Okay, you cited it being a, a commercial eviction. There's no such thing as one.
There was no.
There was, the accusation was there was something that was being done at the business that was illegal. So you didn't, I didn't hear you speak to that.
There was nothing done.
I apologize if I missed it.
So, I'm slightly speculating. I think I read the same article as you. I read that one of eighty of the gun shops in the Littleton location had that, but I did not tie that to this gun shop. So I think, I think it might be another one of the gunsmiths who was working out of the Littleton location. That's what I took from the article today.
Then can you speak to the eviction because there isn't a commercial?
He said he wasn't.
He says he wasn't evicted. He says he still has a, a spot. What I understand, Jeff, please keep me honest, or I mean, maybe, I think you know this because I think we talked about it. I believe they're converting that mill in Littleton into condos, so.
I think there are long-term plans to demolish that building and construct residential development there.
Right. Yep.
I also don't support it.
Yeah.
And I think it's not supported for, it's for professional business intentions. It shouldn't be for light manufacturing.
Get up, uh, state your name and address for the record, please.
Jennifer Valandria, El Maria Circle. And, um, I agree with the comment that was made about light manufacturing. That's gotten us into trouble in the past, which the, with the asphalt plant, which we were basically forced to accept. Um, my question, I have several, is the proprietor of the business mentioned that, um, he only does a small percent of selling components of guns. What percentage of the business is with those components?
Do you have a estimate of what percentage of your sales is components versus complete pieces, I guess?
Uh, under five percent.
And are we allowed to see documentation on that on an ongoing basis?
Uh, Jeff.
It's legal to sell the components, why would we require?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we could condition.
I doubt very much that you can, but I think that information would be available upon review by the Police Department in the course of their inspection of what's going on. I don't know that you have the jurisdiction to try to.
Right. I don't know that we can do anything as this body to force that documentation to be made available.
Okay, understandable. So I also understand that the Littleton Gun Complex is, according to the Globe, direct, quote, "largest collection of federally licensed gun dealers in the nation." You might hear my voice shake because I'm a little upset about this. So in that place, there were lots of issues with people assembling illegal guns before or after and getting around Massachusetts gun laws. So I also wonder, as a business owner, since that was the largest complex in the state, what are your plans for expansion?
Uh, do, yeah, it's, do you have any plans to expand your business?
Not at this point.
Not at this point. So I think, what are our values? Do we want to have another complex like the one in Littleton at some point in time?
Right. I mean, yeah, and just to be very clear, just to answer your question a little bit, if, if he was going to like expand, take on more square footage, whatever, he would have to come back before us to, you know, for another site plan review, so.
I also know that we have very strict parameters in Westford about zoning, and you could be here all night if we let you probably. But I am very curious how many miles it is from the nearest school.
Nearest school to that would be Robinson.
Robinson.
I'd say Robinson.
That's down two twenty-five.
Couple miles.
No, it's Robinson's definitely, yeah, two and a half miles, maybe?
Two and a half miles. So are there any federal or state parameters about how far you can live with gun shops?
I can't speak to federal or state, but under a local zoning, there is not currently any minimum separation distance between this use, which falls under retail and light manufacturing to a school facility.
Okay. Then what I also wonder about is from a criminal background check perspective, we were told that he does them. Was it mentioned, I can't remember if it was just state or federal or both, for the sales of, not for the sales, for the employees?
It's, this was the FBI background check, right? That you have to enter the data?
That's correct.
So it's at least federal, is it also a state background check?
So, yes, we do federal and state background checks. We don't have any employees at this time. If we were ever to hire someone, they, there is a process that we have to go through as an FFL that includes both a federal and a state background check.
So no employees at this time with a criminal record. So, and I also wonder what the parameters are around accepting an employee to work for you. Are there federal parameters or state parameters around who is an automatic disqualification or who you use your judgment around?
So you, you need to be directing your questions here.
Okay, I am.
So are there requirements, if you were to hire somebody, in regard to the background check that they would need to go through?
Yes.
And what are they?
Yes, they are prescribed by the FRB, the Massachusetts Firearms Records Bureau, and they include both state and federal background checks.
I'd like us to see those parameters at some point in time as a town.
If he chooses to hire somebody?
No, I'm saying the parameters for those Cory checks and those Sory checks and where the judgment calls lie, because there are often gray areas.
I would recommend going to the Police Department to get that information.
Yeah.
Well, I hope the committee will certainly review that. And also, as a parent and as somebody who works in healthcare with a master's degree, what I will say is that the U.S. does lead the industrialized world in gun deaths. And not only that, but we have, every country has mental illness. It's not related to necessarily mental illness. It's related to the more guns we have, the more deaths we see.
Thank you for your comments.
Just a point of information, the Goddard School is closer.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Adwad Bhakkar, thirty-two Old Lowell Road. I wanted to go back to the applicant's previous history with the previous commercial space that he leased or owned, you know, was working out of.
Sure.
He mentioned that he still owns or still leases space there. Could you please clarify that for the record, that you currently, as of today, and will continue to have space in that Littleton Plaza?
Is, it's got to come through me.
Sorry.
So, sorry. So it's, honestly, I'm doing it for you. So you still have a lease in this Littleton mill?
I gave it up February first.
Okay, so you don't have a lease in the, in the mill. But as, at the start of the month, you had one and you terminated your lease in February.
I had to understand that he lied when you asked him the question earlier?
I mean.
Okay.
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
Or he, or he, yeah.
He did. I mean, come on.
Thank you, everybody. We got.
So if he lied about that, what else has he lied about today when you asked him this question? And what, how are we gonna hold him? How are we gonna check? You know, he mentioned a lot of state laws, federal laws, FBI checks. How many of us here know what he's talking about? How are we gonna hold him and check on that?
Hmm.
How's the committee planning on doing that? Or is that not your job?
We keep, we keep referencing a committee. So this is the planning board.
Sorry, the planning board.
No, you're the second person who said committee. I'm not quite sure what committee you're referring to. This is a planning board.
How collect, how are we gonna collectively?
So what has to happen, in my understanding, and please, I'd welcome you chiming in here, at least annually, the Westford Police Department has to come through and do an inspection. They also have the right to come in and do spot inspections. And then what, annually ATF comes through and does an inspection as well? Is that true? Or they?
They do spot checks, you said.
Yes. So generally, the Police Department will come through once a year and do a full inspection. They are welcome to come through at any time and do spot checks. The ATF comes by also at any time.
Yep.
To do inspections.
So what I will say, just to answer you, is, and I'm, I'm slightly disappointed. I was hoping that we would have representation from Westford PD here, because there is, if you go through the packet, you'll see a back and forth regarding these security measures, right? So there is, and I actually had some questions regarding this in terms of impact to the town. I was hoping to talk to somebody from Westford PD about like the time impact or their estimated additional overhead that having the shop in town would bring to them.
So I did converse directly with Police Chief Chambers, and he did indicate that it'd be at least eight hours additional for each such new occurrence. There would be annual inspections that they would have to conduct. There would also be additional compliance checks. Some would be with ATF. And then they would also need some additional training. It's unclear how many hours of training it would be.
So my question is, is the applicant gonna pay for all of that? We should make him pay for it. If it's, if it's gonna cost the town, it's a business.
Yeah.
He's not running a charity.
Yeah.
He pays, he'll be paying property taxes, which is determined differently than residential property taxes.
All right. I mean, the board can also factor in, you know, there's been some conversation about a certain amount for the application fee.
Right.
You know, you can certainly, I don't know how much the training is, but just saying it's one of the many variables you can look at besides consistency with past applications in terms of how much you may decide to reduce the application fee amount.
Right.
And then the last thing I wanted to echo what Lady with there mentioned earlier about holding him to his word on what he was asking or what he claimed in terms of the number of hours, number of days open, even number of employees employed at a given time, as well as he's mentioned, anywhere from one to four customers or one to five customers at the max. You know, can we put some limits around not more than so many people in the premise at any given time?
Well, he can't have more than four.
But that's employees.
That's employees, right?
That would be people working.
What if there's a customer?
The occupancy limit would be set by the Building Commissioner based upon the.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's not zoning, so. But under the definition of light manufacturing with not more than four employees, there is a cap where it still fits that category of light manufacturing.
For the employees, but I think he's saying anybody in the space at once, right? So he'd be talking about customers.
Yeah, everybody, including customers.
Which I don't, is, I don't know that we could condition that.
So that parameter, I believe, would be set by building code.
Right.
And that's something that the Building Commissioner would look at as far as the fit-up of any such tenant space.
Right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Marjorie McEwen. I live off of Four Morrison Lane in Greystone, near Rita Miller Elementary. I am here because I will, I strongly urge that you reject this request for the change of use of, from business professional office to light manufacturing. I, we are a military family and we moved here two and a half years ago. I am also a veteran, Air Force, Security Forces. I used to handle weapons myself. I do not feel comfortable living near a weapon shop. We came here and moved here to Westford because of how safe everybody said that it was. But once, if you guys approve this, it would not, no longer feel safe for my family, especially since we are military. It doesn't make a difference. We moved here because we thought we would feel safe. And when we moved here in twenty twenty, all we heard was about racist, we had, we lived in Greystone. We had graffiti of racist antisemitism all over. I feel that if a gun shop is open, it'll be even worse when that pops up. I have two teenagers, I have a senior and a sophomore at Westford Academy. I have a six-year-old at Rita Miller. Another question, not question, because I didn't ask any yet. My question is, why would you allow a gun shop but not cannabis shops or drive-thru restaurants? Because I feel like this is not an important shop to be in Westford. It could be elsewhere.
Yeah. So I will take an attempt to, to answer that and I guess by extension, address my fellow residents of the town of Westford. What's interesting about the fervor with which you guys are talking about how nice it would be to have zoning bylaws that would prohibit this, I would say that the participation by the general public in paying attention to the zoning bylaws until something like this or an asphalt plant pops up that people strongly feel, you know, negatively towards is very low. Not a lot of turnout at public meetings, not a lot of interest in paying attention to the rules of the actual town until somebody is putting something in that you disagree with. So I would, you know, we responded, this board took action on the cannabis thing. I think we were afforded a window of time when marijuana was legalized in the state of Massachusetts. Towns that voted not in favor to legalize marijuana sales in the state of Massachusetts were given a window of time, roughly a year, to enact zoning by, ballpark.
Yep.
Ballpark, a year to enact a zoning bylaw amendment if they wanted to restrict the sale of recreational cannabis in the town. And this board and other boards in town took the action to do that. What I would say is the reason that the applicant before us is likely going to be successful in being able to open his gun shop in Westford is because we don't have anything in the zoning bylaw that prohibits that. And based upon the uses that the applicant is putting before this board, those are permitted in the zoning district that the building in question sits in. So we simply don't have a legal reason to say no.
That's a bummer.
Yeah, wicked bummer. Imagine how it is to come here every other month.
I'm thinking that there would be one in this town. So thanks.
Sure, thank you. Next.
Mary Tyler, I'm Maria Circle.
Yep.
I agree with everybody else who's come up here before me tonight, so I won't repeat.
Thank you for that.
I will say this, this building, many years ago, on that second floor, housed center stage, where my daughter and multiple children from Westford and surrounding towns, they called it their home away from home. And it breaks my heart to know that we are now going to be assembling weapons in the same room as where we taught those kids how to sing and dance and act.
Yep.
I would just implore all of you to put limits on this business. It's obvious from what you're hearing tonight that people in town do not support this. I understand legally, there may not be anything you can do to prohibit him from opening his business here, but I think you have a responsibility to all of us and our children to ensure that there are strict controls and accountability. I have one comment and a question. Regarding digital advertising, I've been a chief marketing officer for several years. I worked in digital advertising for seventeen. I can tell you very specifically that you can target your advertising by geography. It's one of the basic tenants of social media. So as far as his honesty tonight, there's another example to call into question. I would like to know if there's any recourse to bring this to town meeting and open this up to a broader discussion for the town to participate in?
I mean, Jeff, go ahead.
So it is possible for town meeting to take action by amending its zoning bylaw to allow a different level of review, to call out perhaps this use as a separate use that can be separately regulated, because right now it's viewed as simply retail and/or light manufacturing. But that would not have any impact on this particular application, but it could have an impact on future applications down the road.
All right.
And yes, we've already received a request and we've been exploring that, and that is very separate from this application that's before us tonight.
Okay. I guess the question I have for the applicant is, why Westford? Why not Air? Why not Acton? Why not another town? Why not Alston where he lives? Why bring this to Westford? Thank you.
Would you care to answer what has attracted you to Westford?
It's a beautiful town with a excellent gun range. It has an excellent place of business and zoning.
Yeah.
That works. Just to, as an attorney, I have a great respect for the civic system of this country, and I just want to thank everybody for coming here. And even if we may not always agree, I thank you for what you're saying.
Anybody else from the public here to comment? Okay, again, please, new topics, thank you.
Hey, I'm Diana Walker-Moyer. I live at sixty-nine Forest Road, and I'm going to be a counterpoint to the rest of the discussion that's gone on this evening.
Then you will be a new comment.
I am a stamp collector. I also, I am a nurse. I have worked in intensive care units. I have worked in public health. I have worked in college health for many years. I know the issues with mental illness, I know the issues with suicide. I have faced those with patients of my own. I am a licensed, I hold an LTC. I'm a member of the Westford Sportsman's Club. I understand the necessity for safety. I have, we have four boys, two of whom have served our country in Iraq and other places around the world that you don't even want to know about. So we are very respectful of the safety of guns. And I just appreciate this planning board's efforts to do a fair assessment of this. If this gentleman has reason that he's had to leave another site that is untoward, that means that there would not be an appropriate use of the space in this town, I think that should be called into question, and I trust that you folks will assess that. But I do appreciate that this should not be solely an emotional issue, which I have seen hugely here tonight, but also, not just in this, I mean, COVID, vaccinations, I mean, we are in a very emotional time right now. And so I just wanted to give a second opinion maybe on this that has not been as balanced this evening. I appreciate your time.
Appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Diane Wood, one twenty-two Depot.
Good evening.
Good evening. First an editorial comment and then a question or two. We've been in town over forty years, as per my letter. I'm in shock that we're having this discussion and we're here now. We don't allow dog parks. We haven't gone through the dog park scenario. We, we don't allow drive-throughs. We voted down drive-throughs. And we've got a number of other things. We didn't want a traffic light in the center of town, and unfortunately, here we are today. So editorial comment, and I think everybody in this room feels exactly the same way, if not stronger. Littleton is having their town, special town meeting, and you may be aware of it, on the fifteenth, to put before the article to more clearly define, right, a use. And I want to know how we move forward with a special town meeting in the fall, where we may be able to leverage the language, the use, legalities to be able to do this at our fall special town meeting. Would look to you guys to at least set the tone or know how the community, you know, goes forward from here.
Yeah, I think it's a great question. Thank you for it. Jeff, do you want to comment on feasibility around the fall special town meeting, to perhaps be considering anything zoning bylaw language related?
So currently, we've already been asked, we've already been soliciting other examples from other communities and kind of looking what makes sense to tailor something like that to Westford. We are contemplating something for the fall town meeting, but I really do want to try to keep that effort separate from this application that's before us tonight.
Understood.
Denali Delmar again. We couldn't foresee that an asphalt plant might be put in town. We couldn't foresee that a gun shop might want to come here. We did foresee pot. I'm asking you as the planning board, what are we not seeing that you are seeing that I'm asking you as the planning board, what are we not seeing that you are seeing that might come down the pike that you can protect us from?
Yeah. Didn't see this one coming, but I guess we'll ask ourselves that question in a general business topic sometime, uh, in the near future.
Soon, I hope.
Yeah.
The other, the other comment or question I have is, didn't we a long time ago make some bylaw restriction about pornography shops? I think we did. I've been here forty-three years.
Yeah, there is, I believe, a, uh,
An overlay.
A special overlay district that I, I think may now be Orchard Square. So the, the effective opportunity for that is, is not, not the same. It's very limited.
That's what I recall.
Yeah, it's practically not viable at this moment, but there is a location for that.
Okay.
You can't absolutely prohibit certain things.
Do we need to look at that again, or do you think we're?
We're, I'm gonna, that, you can take that up with Jeff next week or whatever. I, we're, we're really need to kind of keep focusing on the application at hand. Thanks. Next.
Hi, I'm Bridgette McDonald at Ninerial Drive. So just to get the, I wanted to make sure that we got the words correctly from the Globe article. It says that Finnerty served, is it Steinrecker, Steinrecher? I don't want to pronounce your name incorrectly. With an eviction notice after the Globe raised questions. So if you, were you served one, was he served one and decided to just get out? You can roll your eyes as much as you want.
Address the board. Address, address here.
This is very serious, if you haven't noticed.
So what is, what is your question?
Very happy about this. So I would like for you to give me a little bit of respect and perhaps not roll your eyes at me.
I, I didn't roll my eyes.
No, but you won't let me talk to him, and that's what he did to me. So I'm telling you, that's what he just did. Do not be disrespectful to me.
Okay, listen, do you have any further questions? Because you're being disrespectful to this body. Okay. Uh, were you served an eviction notice?
No.
So he was never told that. So if I go to Littleton and I talk to Mr. Finnerty, he's going to tell me that he didn't do that and the Globe got this wrong.
It's quite possible.
It, it is possible.
I don't know how you want me to proceed there. He's saying he never got an eviction.
If they, if they didn't get it, if he was served and Finnerty said that he was, does that even matter to you at all?
Whether he's lying about whether he got an eviction notice.
Yeah. And so maybe why?
I guess it would matter if he was evicted for doing something illegal. But I think if he was evicted for doing something illegal, he would no longer have his dealer license. Because that would be the first thing they would take away if he was in violation of something to do with how he was selling what he sells. I think he would lose his right to sell those things, based on what I know.
That's correct.
Also, if, um, anything that we're saying today, is it going to make any difference at all?
I mean, I,
I, I don't feel like it is, but I just want to ask you just straight up, is it?
I, I think what you and others, uh, have asked is for us to just outright reject this because you're very passionately opposed to guns, which I greatly appreciate. But I don't think you understand the parameters with which this board can take action.
So the eighty shops that are a mile up the road isn't enough. We need to have one right here. Another one.
It's not, that's not, that's not, like, it's not a discretionary item for us to,
I'm just saying that. He doesn't live anywhere near here, but he needs to have another gun shop.
You, you know,
And there's eighty down the road. That's a comment. You don't have to answer me. I'm just speaking my mind. I thought I was allowed to do that.
Yep, I'm going to give you about one more minute to speak your mind, so if you could rummage around there. Okay, thank you. Next.
Fred Parker again from thirty-two Old Road.
Yes.
Uh, I know you can't, you, you have parameters. How can, I'm asking you this.
Yeah.
How can we make it difficult, almost impossible, for him to start a business within Westford? What can we do?
What we need to do is what Jeff just said, which is we need to, and this is already in progress, draft amendments to the zoning bylaw that would allow future applicants to face, I guess, stricter requirements and parameters around which they could potentially open another gun shop in Westford.
That, that's for the future, right?
Yeah, yeah.
What can we do today? Can you, can you charge him like ten million dollars in, in fee, for example?
Can't charge him ten million dollars. The, the,
What is the, what is the maximum?
The maximum fee is three thousand dollars.
That's it.
The applicant has asked for a reduction in the fee from three thousand dollars to five hundred dollars, just so that everybody is very clear. No, no, I, no, no. Wait, wait. Allow me to make a point, because I, I don't think people understand this. A change in use, I've been on this board for six years. It is probably the most frequent topic that this board hears on a weekly basis. If this was a nail salon, going in, right, and doing retail sales to the public instead of a professional services, none of you would be here. None of you would care. I, but I, I know, I'm, allow me to make the point. I know it's not a nail salon. Thank you. So the, the difference here is that you have an interest because you, you know, you believe that we should not have this in town. But this topic, if it was any other kind of business, this board would have likely been through this topic in three minutes. We would have granted authority to town staff to administratively deal with this. Because this is literally just a change in use for uses that are allowed by right per the zoning bylaws. So to my fellow townspeople, the correct action for all of us right now is to say, hey, this is a little too easy. We probably need to address the zoning bylaws. Yeah. And tighten this up. That's exactly what will happen. To answer your question, what can we do to make this difficult on the applicant? Charge the top fee, put a million conditions on how he runs his business, and honestly, that's about all we can do tonight.
So as a planning board can,
Uh, we're gonna get to that, but we're letting you have your minute and sharing your, your, what you'd like to say.
So my, my humble request as a planning board is to make it as difficult as possible for him to have a business here. And nothing against the gentleman personally. He could be the, he could, you know, be the best person ever.
Right.
But I just don't want him and his business in my town.
Understood. Yep. Please.
Hi, Namita Gupta, sixty-nine Russell's Way.
Yep, hi.
Um, so I have a question.
Sure.
If, uh, what are the conditions for eviction? In case one of their, uh, you know, guns are used in the town to basically commit a crime, is that going to be grounds for, you know?
Okay, so I don't know that eviction's the way to go. So let me ask you this question. So, um, if a weapon that was sold from your shop is used in a crime, and that's trac, that's traceable, right? Would you know that? Or would, like, certainly the FBI, ATF would know this, where the weapon came from if they can trace the weapon based on its serial number. Yes?
Yes, they would absolutely know who sold it, who manufactured it, who wholesaled it, who sold it, and who possessed it.
Now, I'm going to ask you a kind of complicated question. If, if a weapon that you sold was used to commit a crime, that wouldn't, I would think that would not necessarily come back to you, assuming that the transaction was done to somebody who passed the background check, it was sold legally, and then that person chose to take action with the firearm later. That would not negative, have negative consequences to you or your business. Is that true?
Legally, it would probably not have consequences for my business.
But if the weapon was shown to be sold illegally, or if you, if you let somebody who was on a delay from the FBI when you run the background check, leave with a component and that was used in a crime, you would be in trouble.
I would lose my license that minute and probably go to prison.
Correct. Does that answer your question?
It does, but I, I'm going to voice my opinion on this too. It's just, we felt safe. I, I understand your second amendment, but it's supposed to be regulated militia, but there is no,
You need to talk to the board, ma'am. We know, we know, we know. We know. You gotta talk here.
It's just, you know, I, I have two kids that are in Westford school system. And this is just, I can't understand why we would allow something like this in this town. And I hope, as they were mentioning the asphalt plant, I don't think there's anyone monitoring. You won't believe how many times my house shakes every time they blast over there. So, uh, how, who is going to make sure that someone is making, you know, making sure that they are accountable for whatever they are producing in that store?
I mean, I'm gonna, I'm honest, I'm not trying to be flip. I think the answer is the Westford Police Department and literally the FBI and ATF through the spot checks that they do and the documentation he is required to keep for his business, that is the check and balance.
And I don't think I'm okay with an annual, once, once a year inspection. I think, you know, all those three sixty-five days in between, like, what, who's going to make sure that he's following the law? I don't think I'm okay with just, uh, the, uh, I, I would have been good for the police, uh, someone to be there from the Westford PD to answer these questions. Because I don't think any of us will feel safe, you know, the rest of the days that there's no one kind of, there's no oversight on what they're doing there.
I, I hear you. I, I appreciate your comments. It's just, I think you're asking questions that higher legislative bodies would need to opine on. It's not,
But then I don't think you guys should make a decision until all those questions are answered.
You know, this is a, this is a site plan review.
And we've, again, yeah.
Read through the criteria that we look at.
Right.
You know, is there, is there going to be a sign? Is there going to be,
Traffic, lighting.
Traffic, lighting, safety outside. Those are the things we look at in this application. This is exactly what we're, we're limited to.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Sona. I'm at Twenty-Sixth River. I'm, I don't understand why he needs to have a business here when so much of his competition is just down the road. So this, why would he have a business here? We, and everybody, anybody who's interested in a gun could just drive less than a mile away and pick it up, right? So what is his reason? And second question to you.
Yep.
For him, I missed when he said, what were his reasons for having a store over here? I heard he thought it was a great town. I don't know if he said that. But can he please tell us again what his interest is and not, and his interest in not having one in Alston, but over here?
He's already answered this question, but,
No, I missed it. So can you please say that again?
I, I would just like to say, that has no bearing on this. I appreciate you want to know. This is a free country. Anybody has a right to have a business in any town they want.
I have a right to know.
No, no, you don't.
I don't have a right to know.
No, you don't. If he, if he,
This town, don't I?
If he choo, if he chose to have a gummy, gummy drop store and he chose to have it here, you don't need,
He doesn't need to have a gummy drop store.
I don't care.
Let me, okay, wait.
I don't care.
So, so hold on, hold on. I will, I will answer, what, what I, what I heard him say, his answers, his answers for choosing Westford is it was, it's a wonderful community. He said there's a, a couple of good shooting ranges in town, uh, good customer clientele, and what did I miss?
Zoning. He's able to do it.
It's zoning.
He's able to do it.
And also a building, a space is available.
And I think to answer your question, because I'm not even going to put this in front of the applicant, those eighty, uh, gun dealers in Littleton are being displaced because of the decision to change that mill over or tear it down and turn it into condos. So you have a large number of gunsmiths, you know, gun dealers who are being displaced from that location. I think you can follow the bouncing ball.
So just, um, this is not a question, but to go back to the person who's going to resign, are we allowed to not ask questions about why a store is coming up in a, in a, this is a US law, is that what it is? We can't ask why somebody is setting a business in a particular town? We're not allowed to ask that?
You're allowed to ask, but he doesn't have to answer.
I guess, I guess the point is, it doesn't really have a bearing in how we're going to render our decision. I mean, you're certainly welcome to ask. If it makes you feel better, feel free to ask. But it doesn't, it doesn't affect our decision.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Chris Clums, fourteen Texas, Texas Road. We all understand that there are eighty gun shops in Littleton being displaced. So this is number one here, the tip of the iceberg. I guarantee that a whole pile of them are going to come through and be looking at Westford. Westford has really high annual income. We're the perfect town, blah, blah, blah. Everybody loves Westford, so they want to have it here. What can we do? Is there anything we can do not to have to wait till October special town meeting to put some kind of a hiatus in building or a hiatus in granting approvals for this kind of thing in place now until some committees can be formed and people can look at the broader picture of what Westford should be doing strategically? This should be something that can be accomplished, putting a temporary hiatus in. I know Groton put a temporary hiatus on building homes a number of times. I'm concerned about this kind of thing because, and also to have some, uh, I know you're going to be putting provisions or conditions onto this permit or license or whatever. But I'm concerned about those, and I want to ask the planning board to put a lot of thought into what those should be. Primarily because, you know, we had provisions when there was dog boarding in town, that there were provisions that there was an annual inspection and there would be so many dogs allowed to be boarded, eighty or something like that. And come to find out, over the past fifteen years, the, the dog boarding people thought they were going to the police department and saying, hey, come and inspect, and nothing ever happened. And come to find out, at one of the more meetings then, there were like a hundred or a hundred and twenty dogs there. There were, you know, many more employees there. There were many more hours of operation and so forth and so on. These things do slip. So there needs to be account, not only conditions, but accountability for how you're going to revisit those and make sure. You know, because this isn't dog boarding. It's not dog poop. This isn't, uh, you know, a nail salon. This is guns. This, lives could be at stake, and we know the country's going crazy now at any rate. So some due diligence needs to be put into any conditions. And also, I'd really like to recommend a hiatus in, in approving future, um, plans for this kind of thing until we can get it straightened around, whether it needs to come to spring town meeting or whatever. And I would think that should be legal or doable. I'm hoping.
Thanks for your comments. Jeff?
So,
Would, would, uh, you might even know what I'm asking.
A moratorium would require a town meeting vote, I believe.
Yeah, but could, if we wanted to entertain throwing together quick language for a moratorium for March, would that even be feasible with the amount of time we have between now and March twenty-fifth?
Or legal?
I, in my opinion, the best thing the town can do is to begin the public hearing process for a zoning bylaw amendment as soon as it is able to do so.
Because a moratorium wouldn't be effective, or you don't think we have time, I mean, a moratorium?
I'm not certain that we, I think we've missed, I believe we have missed the deadlines for this town meeting.
Okay.
But there are some advantages to commencing and publishing the legal ad for such a zoning bylaw amendment as soon as practical.
Okay. Anybody else from the public here to get up and make a comment?
This is Bob. I have just one question, I guess, to, um, to Jeff, everyone. We've had other cases where we've had, uh, uh, an item that we wanted to rush into consideration. And there's a special town meeting provision in our bylaws. So I guess the question, which is, how fast could a special town meeting, um, petition, um, be submitted? And what would be the earliest at which a special town meeting could be called?
I don't have that information available tonight. But regardless, the most important thing is getting the appropriate language ready as soon as possible and the public hearing notice published as soon as possible. And then whatever timeline that presents.
Suggest folks check in at our next meeting and we can update.
Yeah, next meeting's in a month, though. I'm mulling that. Okay, go ahead.
So for those of us who aren't lawyers or who,
Just, just, uh,
No, honestly,
Name and address again for the record.
Jennifer Volandry, Almeria Circle. So basically, for those of us who aren't lawyers, who, you know, don't have a ton of expertise in planning and zoning, can you circulate a document? Because if I asked you to explain this now, it'd probably take a while unless you wanted to give me a high-level bulleted overview of exactly what it takes to reject a business from coming to town if they meet the zoning parameters, like light manufacturing. Do we have to allow any business in the world? Like someone, I won't,
So what's very important is that we are consistent with the precedent that we set.
Yeah.
In general, I don't think we've ever rejected a change in use, assuming that the underlying zoning is consistent with what's allowed based on the sub, on, on the underlying zoning. I can't recall us ever denying a change in use.
Well, with one exception of Newport materials, but that didn't, uh, play well.
Well, that was, that was before my time.
Right. So, so where an application or proposal is only subject to site plan review, this board has very little discretion. If it's also paired up with, say, a special permit or some other application, they may have a lot more discretion and even have an opportunity to say no. They do not have that with mere site plan review. It's the only,
Based upon what this applicant is doing, just to directly answer your question, the only two things that would prohibit this from going in, you got to keep me honest here, would be one, if the applicant did not want to pay the fee that we imposed to actually submit his application. And two,
Application was materially incomplete.
Okay. Well, so can we make sure we sit, we keep our usual and customary fee and not give them a discount at least?
You're the third person who's asked, so certainly I think we're going to take that into strong consideration when we deliberate the fees, uh, schedule.
Excellent. And, um, one of the things that I think might have been misheard or I didn't explain it well was I was asking about, uh, Cory and Sori policies, the state and federal background checks. And, um, in the healthcare environment, a lot of organizations are able to, like, they all have their own policies, right? So there are some offenses that are automatic disqualifications and some that are like, oh, maybe you'll wait a couple years after this person had this whatever, years after this person had this whatever type of offense, right? So, that's why I'm wondering with this and with his employees, where the gray areas would be? And if I'm being told to go to the police department and look at those policies? We've never had a gun shop in town before, so the police probably wouldn't have something like that. So, I think, as a planning board and as a community, it would help us to know kinda where those parameters are and where the gray areas lie. So, if he does come to town, which I hope he doesn't, um, then we at least know what we might be dealing with. Because like, for example, in Massachusetts, like sober homes are unregulated, so you have deaths there.
Yep.
Right? And also, there was a comment made earlier about, you know, this was an emotional meeting, and I think basically, the reason for that is that guns are made to kill either animals or people. So, I think people are a little upset about that.
Yep.
Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Can I answer something briefly?
Uh, sure.
There's no gray area in our background checks. We're given an approve, delay, or deny. We're, we're not even told why.
Yeah. I think she was referring to the background checks, that if you were going to hire two gun assembly technicians, what those background checks would look like, I believe, is what she was referring to.
I believe it's, it's the same way. We're not given a, we're not allowed to decide. We're told by-
So, in the, in the interest of trying to get an answer, though, because hon- honestly, like, you know, this, we are not gonna be the ones to review the background checks. Is that, is that a question we can ask of Chief Chambers? If, is he aware of, if, if-
I, I think it might be helpful-
Mr. Steinbrecker was to expand his business and add two gun technicians, whether or not the background checks, would the people he was looking to hire be background checked? And would those people, would Westford PD be brought into the loop, that he's hiring two people and get a copy of the background checks?
So, while it may not be part and parcel of your application for you tonight, I do think it's just, you know, good public service, we can connect with the police chief and get some of these questions answered, um, for the board.
Yeah, that would be good.
That can be shared.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Step up. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Mark Chisignant, Five North Main Street. Uh, I'm in support of him, and, uh, just like to point out to some people that if he were to sell any component that could be used in the building of a firearm, even if it wasn't serialized, Massachusetts prevents that with their own firearm license. He's not permitted to sell any component that could be used to manufacture a weapon, whether or not it's serialized or not, because of how Massachusetts law is. If you, as a private citizen, were to find a spent shell casing, decide to pick it up and carry it in your pocket, just because you thought it was cool, and you were then stopped by a police officer, mere possession of that makes you a criminal in violation of Massachusetts gun law.
That's good to know, I won't pick up any spent casings. Thank you.
Not safe to do so, anyway.
I might've missed this, but did the gentleman who just spoke identify himself and his affiliation to this company?
He gave his name and address for the record, yes.
I have no relation to him whatsoever.
You're not an employee?
No.
Okay.
You don't get to ask people questions.
Okay, that was incorrect. However, what I did wanna point out is that in the Globe article that was published either last Sunday or the Sunday before, um, there was a lot of commentary about how it wasn't his business, but a lot of the people in that complex that were his neighbors, um, were skirting the very strict Massachusetts gun laws by selling those components and engaging in a ton of, ton of illegal activity. So, regardless of what was just said, I wanted to bring that other issue up.
Yes, read that, read that Globe article yesterday, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Elise Sonikashen-Holzberg, Sixth Buddy Lane. This, I believe, is an emotionally charged issue, we all know that. And we entertained this discussion some years back, if you all recall. And, and it was pretty charged back then, too, with packed auditoriums. May I ask the board, if we're gonna go down this road again, please, would you take the opportunity to show some leadership in, I, I, you are leaders, is what I'm trying to say, in addressing this issue with maximum respect for all citizens in town? We've got neighbors that are side by side. Many of these neighbors probably don't know that their neighbors are gun owners. In fact, a lot of the folks here speaking who are worried about driving by a store with guns probably don't realize that there are two, not one, but two gun clubs in town, and the town is also surrounded by numerous gun clubs. So, like it or not, if you're living in Westford, you need to be aware that you're gonna have guns around you, right? And probably, you'd probably be smart to raise your kids to understand how to be safe around them, too. So, regardless of what happens with this application, I just wanted to say, please, if this is gonna go to a town meeting kinda thing, let's be respectful of all residents here, and, you know, the folks who are trying to be law-abiding, and the folks who are trying to be safe, and the folks who want their kids safe and everything, right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's well said, thank you. All right. Anybody else from the public here to comment? Okay. All right. Let's, let's gather ourselves. Yeah, we have to get into conditions. I, I'd like to, does the applicant have anything further before we do some deliberation here? No, you're good?
I'm here.
Okay. Great. Okay, uh, let's start by looking at conditions of approval, if that's okay for everybody?
Don't get along.
Okay, great. Who would like to go first?
I'm happy, I agree with the condition, uh, that is in our packet, the, the police condition. As written, um-
We suggested that one.
Yeah, thank you. I would, uh, propose a condition that there's no exterior signage advertising this business, or whatever. Can we do that?
May, may I ask, is the applicant willing to volunteer and agree to that?
I had, well, I have a que, I have a question.
There may be some, there could-
Well, I, I, I had thought it because he said he does not want any exterior-
We're not seeking to put any exterior signage.
Yeah.
We, we may legally have to put something right next to the door, as you see it right there.
Yeah.
Says like, so that, you know, FedEx can find us.
Yeah.
But it would just be-
Yeah, I was thinking inside the door, or wherever, but, but no.
Yeah, we're not gonna put a big-
So, you're not looking to put in a, add to the ground sign?
No.
It would be only like directory at the door?
But just, I just wanna be, if he wanted to do that in the future anyway, he'd have to come back here for a sign permit, right?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily to the planning board, but to the, uh, building commissioner for if he's swapping some of the content of the sign out.
Okay.
I was just wondering about, 'cause, because, uh, people don't, don't wanna advertise that there's a, a gun manufacturer in town.
So-
Could there, could we legally put in a condition about-
Why don't we go one at a time, with the conditions?
Yeah. So, that, that was-
So, the police safety check, we're all on board with?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then fire department, sprinkler.
Yeah, fire department, sprinkler, yeah.
Well, um-
Again, I wanna be careful, that's building code.
It wasn't necessarily sprinkler, it's just, we have not gotten a report back or heard definitively what, what their requirement was, but as Jeff said, that's a building.
Yeah.
I was one, I was looking at, um, the hours-
Well, let's go back to signage, right?
You wanna go to the sign?
Yeah, so, so-
I, I, personally, I was just offering that up to the board members.
Well, if he's fine with just a small sign, as he said, by the door, just to direct people, it's not gonna be outside, it's not gonna be lighted, it's-
So, we're saying, no exterior signage, other than for the purpose of what? Notifying, I guess, mail carrier and postal services of the presence of the business? So, something modest at the door and/or inside the door? Wayfinding?
I would agree with that.
So, it's not gonna be on a marquee, old front, basically?
Yeah, it wouldn't be, yeah.
Okay.
So, I, I believe I understand the intent, I just wanna find the terms in our bylaw. There is something that allows for sort of, you know, for practical purposes and/or deliveries, they need to know where the heck to go, and for, if there's anything related to E nine-one-one, you know, they gotta satisfy those minimum requirements.
Well, we're not gonna close this tonight, 'cause you know, I always wanna read the order of conditions before I vote on them, anyway. But, uh-
Yes.
Hours of operation, um, I would s- Is that building open on the weekends?
I believe so.
The question is, I was thinking eight, eight AM to five PM, uh, but should it-
Buildings open seven days. What are the actual operational hours for the building?
Um, eight to five AM, eight AM to five PM. Though, generally, we would probably, uh, be looking for, uh, any weekdays, we would be eleven to five, and on Saturday, we would probably do eight to two or three.
So, do we wanna restrict it to just the hours that he's suggesting?
I mean, if it's eight to five, six days, right? No Sundays.
Yeah.
I mean-
Yeah. I'm fine.
Yeah. I mean, I think, we're, we're getting past the dark hours, right? Yeah, so, okay. Are you okay if we restrict, uh, we wanna condition the hours to be eight to, eight AM to five PM, seven days?
Six days.
Three days.
Six days.
He said he wants two to three days before.
So-
Now it's seven days?
Quiet, please.
So, eight to five, so-
Yeah.
You, you will never need to operate on Sundays?
Sunday has been a big day for us traditionally. If that was a requirement of the board, um, to, to pass this business, I could agree to it.
What we're trying to do is reasonably restrict the hours of operation, so that you're not, you know, transacting at nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night.
Definitely.
But we also are not looking for a business owner to put themselves in a corner where it's like, you pick three days randomly now, and you're like, oh, it's not Thursday, and today happens to work.
It, it wouldn't work like that for me, anyway, because we're not setting up hours, we're by appointment.
Yeah.
You know, because, you know, I might have a court date on Tuesday and Thursday one week, and the next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, right. But that's, I, I understand how a professional schedule works, that's why I'm saying, do you want to just pick two or three days? I mean, you said, you'll only be operating two to three days, but I assume you don't know definitively, it's always Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, it could vary week to week.
I, I don't know.
Right.
What those days are. I, definitely, I would agree to eight to five PM, uh, uh, hours, that we would be there.
And, 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 and he might only have customers there a few days a week, but he does, as he stated, he does come in there and work on things on other days.
Right.
And I can't see restricting a business that can only operate three days a week.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
As long as they're not there at nighttime, I, I-
Okay. If, uh, if the audience is gonna talk while the board is talking, I have to ask you to step out, because we are actually trying to work through this here. So, you, you had your time to state your, your concerns at the mic, and it's, it's not like, this is not audience response right now. Thank you. What were you saying?
Again, so, he's not seeing people at nighttime, they're not coming in and out, so I, I don't have an issue with, you know, eight to five, eight to five, as many days as he wants.
Darren?
Yeah.
Yeah. Bob, what are your thoughts on hours of operation?
Um, I'm fine with what I've been hearing. Um, I recognize it's an appointment business, and, um, I'm comfortable, I mean, if, if we can limit, you know, hours on Sunday, that'd be great, but, um, I also recognize it's by appointment, so I think limiting it up till five PM or six PM is acceptable to me. Thank you.
Yeah.
And since you're on the speaker, you were okay with the sign thing as well? We didn't ask your opinion on that.
On the sign, and, and that was, it's always hard to hear exactly what's going in. On the signage, I would like a condition, um, that would restrict what would happen in the future, because, um, there's a lot of things that are allowed by right. And so, if the applicant agreed to what he has stated here, being put in writing, that'd make me feel a lot more comfortable, that we have something binding for the future. Thank you.
Chair, if I may. So, I think the sign, I was trying to recall, it's called a small wall sign.
Yep.
So, in non-residential districts, um, a small wall sign may be erected on the exterior wall of a building at an entrance or other appropriate location.
Yep.
Uh, this does call out, though, for a sign display area of six square feet. I don't know that the applicant would be looking for such a large sign.
But, but-
Yeah, like, literally, like, that's a foot.
But, but, like pole signs, we could say no pole signs.
Is the applicant willing to volunteer that-
That's, that's, the pole sign is like what's out there now, correct?
Yes, I, I'm not looking for a pole sign. There is a, a large, uh, sign by the street already that lists some businesses there. I don't wanna be on it. I don't wanna be visible from someone driving by. It's just, if you know where we are, uh, I'd like it to be obvious which door to enter and where to go from there, so that customers aren't walking into the other business there.
Makes sense.
I think we can-
So, given enough direction, you can figure out the appropriate language?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we have the police safety check, exterior signs. What else have you got?
There's nothing about volume and cut, nothing about pedestrian, it's, no, nothing about obstruction of scenic views, parking and storage and other outdoor services are not, nothing, nothing about glare from headlights, lighting intrusion, nothing there. Departure from the character and scale of the building, it's in the vicinity, nothing there. Nothing about contamination of groundwater, level of traffic service, I think he's fine there with only a few cars, and when I drove by there in the middle of the day, pretty much all the parking spaces were empty.
Yep.
Transportation, again, I, that, those are our criteria, so.
Thanks, Kate. Bob? Do you have some thoughts on, on conditions?
Uh, nothing in addition to what I've heard here.
Thanks. Mike?
We cannot legally do things like no bullets, 'cause that's, that's his business, I mean-
In my opinion, in my opinion, no.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have anything to do by zoning.
'Cause that was on my list. So, we can't condition this approval such that it does not include ammunition sales, and if he were to want to sell ammunition, he'd have to come back before us.
How about you have your list, and you allow us, uh, to review? Things are deemed not legal by counsel, they come up.
Great. Sounds good.
Thank you.
So, get all the intent, we'll craft it, and-
Okay. So, then I have condition that he does not sell ammunition, and if ammunition sales will commence, he must come back before the board for a further conversation, and I'd like Westford Police Department to be here so that we can understand more about how that's being secured.
I wouldn't agree with that.
Yes. You would not agree with that? Okay. Would you agree to that?
I mean, obviously, I'd like as few restrictions as possible.
Of course.
I will say that, should we ever start selling ammunition, we will store it per the regulations of the Westford Police Department. Massachusetts also has regulations on ammunition storage.
Yeah.
We're never gonna sell black powder, we're never gonna sell reloading supplies, anything-
I read that in your project narrative.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't build ammunition.
No.
Even when you have sold ammunition, it, you're basically reselling manufactured, you're not manufacturing it.
Exactly.
Yeah. Would you be willing to accept the condition that you may not assemble ammunition?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you'd accept that condition?
Yeah, no plan for that.
Okay.
Just to explain my thoughts.
Yep.
I, I have tremendous faith in the ATF, and I know the regulations in Massachusetts are very strict.
Yep.
That's where I stand on all this stuff. I mean, I, I think we can't be the, the, the people reviewing security and regulations and all this stuff. I mean, we have a limited purview, and-
Yep, I understand.
That's where I'm coming from.
Yep. Do you have any other thoughts on conditions? Darren, any thoughts on conditions?
Uh, nothing further than we've already discussed.
Yep. The only one that I have in addition to the, to the no ammunition assembly, which it sounds like you're open to, and I think-
Absolutely.
sounds like you're open to and I think, and I think I'll still put out there no ammunition sales at all and if he is going to, I'd like, not saying no, but I just think it should cause him to come back before us with WPD and talk about like, if that's going to have any change to the security protocols that he's working on with Westford PD and if Westford PD, frankly, is, is Westford PD okay with that? That's the biggest thing I'd be looking to check in with.
That makes sense.
You know, that's, I'm not, you know, a- again, I'm not saying it would like void his ability to like operate a business there or whatever, I would just want them to come back and, you know. What we've heard a lot tonight from the town is transparency and know what's going on, so I think in the interest of understanding that something has changed about the site, like it might warrant. Uh, similarly, the last thing I had is, um, you said that you don't sell unserialized components, eighty percent components, things that can be used to assemble ghost guns. Would you be willing to accept an order of conditions that you would not sell those items then?
Absolutely.
All right, well, there you go. So, that's...
We're, we're not in the business of...
Yeah.
Yeah. We're just not in that business.
Great. Okay. So, Jeff, do you have the, uh, I think I have the list, which...
Further, Massachusetts has made those illegal.
Right. I, I understand that.
Thank you.
So, was there any thought about, um, similarly about number of employees? So, I know it has to be capped under the bylaw to three plus himself, total of four. Um, and that's allowed u- under this use, so, um, okay. So, so far, you want to incorporate the volunteered and recommended, uh, condition of approval relative to the security plan?
Yep.
Um, there will be no ex, no signage with the exception of the, the small wall signage that's for directory purposes at the one entrance. There'll be no ground sign, pole signs of that like. Um, you want the hours of operation to be limited from eight to five, correct?
Yep.
Um...
Actually, actually...
On Sundays, do you want to...
Actually, I, I was, I mean, you said eleven to five during the week, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I was, Jeff, I was going to ask hours of operation, ten to five, Monday through Friday, Saturday and Sunday, eight to twelve.
But, but there's a difference in the manufacturing part and the retail part. Do you want to limit the retail part of it to...
That would be...
We can't limit him from going into his work.
No.
Yeah.
Right. So, retail's what we're limiting him.
We're limiting the retail sale portion, I think. We're not limiting when he can enter the, the building and do assembly, right?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, hold on. All right, so can you restate that for the retail component?
Right.
Of the business?
Monday through Friday.
Customer foot traffic.
Monday to Friday, ten to five, Saturday, Sunday, eight to twelve.
Can we do eight to two?
So, I, again, I would think that if he's working during the week, the weekend is going to be, he's going to be...
I think that's fine.
Yeah, that's, that's generally when we get most, because...
Yep. I understand.
Our clients have jobs.
Yep. Makes sense. Eight to two.
Okay.
Uh, this is Bob, I just want to make one point here. I think limiting business hours, yeah, is fine. Um, but mo- all other businesses, I think some of, some of the points you made earlier, um, we only restrict certain things and when employees are in a store, it's not considered, that does not mean the store is open.
Right.
It's strictly when they're a public, uh, consumption over.
Right. Agreed. Thanks, Bob.
And we're going to check a requested condition of approval that the applicant would not immediately sell no ammunition, sales of ammunition. If they want to, they would have to come back to the board with...
With, with WPD to verify that the safety conditions that are put in place on the property satisfy the requirements for storing ammunition.
Okay. Um, the app, the applicant has volunteered a condition that he will not assemble ammunition?
Yep.
Or sell the materials to do so.
Good.
Because that's, that's the really dangerous stuff. It's the black powder, blasting caps, that kind of thing.
And then we have one about not selling the, um, eighty percent manufacturer ghost guns?
Yep. Un- unserialized components, sorry, eighty percent. But to the applicant's point, I mean, technically speaking, that's illegal anyway, but I think we're just memorializing something that would be otherwise illegal anyway, but...
Okay. What am I missing?
Police safety check, hours of operation.
Fire.
There's no fire. Uh, you got the exterior signage, small wall sign?
You did.
Yeah. And then ammo assembly, ammunition. I think that's, that's it. That's the list. Okay? All right. Okay. So, um...
I, I move that we recommend to staff that they draft a decision for our review at our next meeting.
Um, okay.
I...
Did you...
Are, are there any, uh, criterion here that I, I did not satisfactorily address or...
We're, we're not quite there. No, you're, you've, no, you've answered all of the...
Oh, yeah, we have waiver requests.
All the site plan, yeah, we, yeah, there's waiver requests and there's also the fee. So, but you just put forward a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
That, that we direct staff to...
To draft the decision.
To draft a decision for...
So, are we agreeing that we're going to continue this?
I would prefer to continue it because I don't like voting on a decision without reading it.
I'm okay continuing it, but I think we're going to close the public hearing.
I...
I'd be agreeable with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, to her motion, I second her motion.
Motion and a second to instruct, do you have enough information to act on?
I think I have enough information to prepare a draft decision.
Yep.
Once you decide what you're going to do with the waiver request.
Yep, and the fee.
Um, so, I think, I think this is for the applicant's benefit now. So, I think what is being discussed here tonight is, this is a public hearing process. When they close the public hearing, if they do that, they might do that tonight. If that's the case, then that stops the input of new materials from the public. The board still has time to review a draft decision and to finalize it. They are allowed to seek clarifying information about those items that have already been discussed, but it doesn't open the door to new things can, can come in. It would be fine tuning what has happened here. If we need clarification from the police chief on how to word, say, the ghost gun thing, you know, um, the public hearing would be closed if they do that. So, we not be accepting additional correspondence into the public record.
Okay. I just want to make it clear that, you know, we will have months before we could even think about opening for business already and only ask that, you know, we, we move forward with, you know, as much...
Yeah. All right, if it makes you feel any better, Kate has, uh, been steadfast in preferring to see, uh, the written decisions before we actually close a meeting. So, she's being very consistent with her request in this case.
Understood.
All right. So, now we need to talk about, uh, fee.
Sorry, was there, so the, the motion that I heard...
There was a motion and a second.
Is it really to prepare a draft decision because we, we don't really continue once, if the hearing gets closed, which we're not there yet, but...
Right.
Okay.
We haven't voted on, actually, we haven't voted on...
That's true, we haven't.
Well, you, right.
Okay.
Because you should discuss the waivers first.
Yes, we should discuss the waivers first. Do you mind if we sit on your motion for a little bit? All right. You want to dive into the waivers then?
For some reason, I can't download any of my things off of us.
Jeff, you need us to, um, specifically act on each of these waiver requests?
So, this generally, in my opinion, there's three waivers. One is the reduction in the application fee. As you've stated, they requested a reduction from three thousand to five hundred dollars. There's also a request...
Yeah, I'm finding it.
Section nine four four, plans...
Yep.
To require that they provide, uh, you know, the requisite types of plans prepared by the qualified licensed professionals.
Yep.
Similar to that is the second one of preparation of plans. So, they're really tied together, saying they have to be twenty-four by thirty-six in sheets.
Yep.
Stand by a professional engineer.
Yeah, I have them. Yeah.
And then the plans are supposed to show all those things, including the utilities, the, the planting, you know, which all of that exterior stuff benefited from prior site plan review.
Yeah.
So, those are the nature, high level of the three waiver requests, fee and related to plans, even though it's two separate requests.
Right. You need us to take action on each of these waiver requests?
I do, in order to write a decision, yes.
Got it.
We've never, we always vote on the waivers as part of the, the order of conditions.
The planning board decision, um, that's conservation. I know near and dear to your order of conditions.
No, 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 no. The same. You've always told me, oh, we'll vote on the waivers at the same time as the, uh...
So, that's typically for, uh, site plan or subdivision, so you're not...
This is site plan.
Subdivision or special permit. I apologize.
Sorry.
So, where you have discretion to grant certain waivers of a type, where you're not granting the waivers and losing that leverage and then voting on the decision. So, given this is mere site plan...
Got it.
Use comes in already approved.
Should I make a motion that we waive section nine point four point four plan requirement?
Four point four, four point five, four point six.
Uh, well, four point... Nine four four, nine four five get to the technical stuff that he is seeking the relief for. Nine four six gives you the authority to waive the technical requirements. He followed the procedure nine four six to request the waivers from the prior section.
So, we only need to find nine four four, nine four five, and then we need to decide on the waiver fee?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, did you just put forward nine four four?
I did.
There's a, okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the requested waiver of the nine four four plans requirement. Um, for people who are like, why are you giving this guy any waivers? Basically, uh, he's moving into an existing building, why are we forcing him to do another whole plan set? Again, this board should be consistent and we regularly waive this for a lot of applicants who are moving into tenant space in a building and they are doing nothing to modify the exterior of the building, so this is very consistent with other decisions. Motion and a second to approve this. All those in favor, say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Nine four five.
Uh, I move that we approve the request of waivers, section nine point four point five, preparation of plan requirement.
Sorry. Motion and a second to waive section nine four five, uh, for this application. All those in favor, say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Uh, Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Okay. We're on to fees. Bob, what are your thoughts on fees?
Repeat, I did, you broke up what?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, what are your thoughts on the fee? So, the applicant has requested waiving the fee from three thousand dollars down to five hundred. We've obviously heard a lot of, um, feedback from the public, uh, requesting that we not be so, I guess, uh, favorable in terms of waiving this fee. Even though, again, and I will just say this so that everybody is aware, hold on, Bob. Generally speaking, and again, I'll, I know it's not a nail salon, but if this were a nail salon, this would have been, this would have been sent for administrative review and approval and the applicant would have paid a three hundred dollar fee, just so that everybody's clear. Bob, thoughts on fees?
So, my thoughts on fee would, I would look to staff to ask the simple question, really, has there been any substantial hours required on, in our, in terms of our staff reviewing this application compared to any other normal application?
So, I would say we've certainly had some, um, significant public comment, um, in terms of the number of staff hours that's translated to. I can't say it's a lot of staff hours, um, and we never know what we're going to get with a particular public hearing, um, but this was more public comments than a typical public hearing.
That, that was kind of what I expected, so, um, I'm, I'm kind of steering away from the bottom of five hundred. Um, I think we have to make sure that we do cover our costs for handling this process in the, uh, planning and engineering department. Uh, I'm not sure we can get towards, you know, three thousand in dollars in cost, but I may be wrong on that, so I'm perfectly willing to entertain, you know, a lesser amount, let's say in the order of a thousand or so, that would cover, um, those extra hours for handling all of the materials that are being submitted. But I think the three thousand typically gets into, um, technically more challenging applications where there is, uh, a much more additional staff time for analysis of the application. And I don't think that's what we're talking about here.
Right. Agreed. Thanks for your comment.
That's what...
Yep. Kate?
I think five hundred is reasonable, but, um, if, uh, others on the board want to suggest another amount, I'm happy to hear the arguments.
Okay. Mike?
I have difficulty increasing from what we normally would do. I'm okay with the five hundred.
Bullshit.
Darren?
Uh, yeah, I think the five hundred's pretty normal, but I think we're going to have extra kind of capacity, I mean, resource issues here. I mean, the police have to go do the same detail, I mean, walk through an inspection staff. This is much more than just a simple change in use, so I'd be a little, I'd go, you know, a thousand or north of that.
Yeah. Yeah. And, I mean, as I stated earlier, I mean, I, I really would like to understand more from Westford PD, like, what this is going to do from an overhead perspective for them year in and year out, because I think that would influence this a little bit, but I do think that overall, the draw in the town will be more, while it's far less than a full application that requires stormwater and, and all of the work that Paul and the town engineering staff has to put into a large and complicated site plan review, um, I think this is still more than a typical change in use. Uh, so I'm somewhere between a thousand and fifteen hundred for this, so, um, sounds like a few of us are in that neighborhood. Um, Darren, since you're amenable? You have, uh, thoughts on a motion?
Yeah, I would say, I would make a motion to waive, I should say, to reduce the application fee from three thousand to fifteen hundred for the application.
I'll second that. So, there's a motion and a second to reduce the app, uh, the application fee to the applicant for, uh, from three thousand U.S. dollars to fifteen hundred U.S. dollars. All those in favor, say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. All right. Jeff, so, uh, we've taken action on the waivers, we've taken action on the fee. We now, uh, and we've taken, no, we have not taken the vote yet. We are sitting on a motion and a second to instruct town staff to prepare a draft decision.
Great forum. Great forum. Great public...
So, there's, so there is that and then the matter of the actual public hearing itself.
Close the public hearing.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so, motion and a second to instruct town staff to draft a decision. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Can I just?
Yeah, hold on, Bob.
Can you remind me, because it kind of got tabled, who was the motion maker in second? That was Kate?
Kate made the motion and?
Mike seconded.
Mike seconded.
Thank you.
Sorry. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Okay, so we will have a draft decision prepared for the next meeting.
We will have a draft decision prepared shortly.
Great.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, is there one?
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing for PB twenty-three oh two. Is there any discussion? Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor to close the public hearing say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Yes.
Hi, Angela Harkness, town moderator. I just want to speak to the town meeting questions very briefly that came up before.
Sure, thank you.
I really wanted to wait until the hearing was over.
Yeah, yeah.
So we are beyond the time for anything to be put on the warrant for the March twenty-fifth town meeting.
Okay.
The next special town meeting traditionally would be in October.
Yeah.
If the select board was presented with a petition signed by two hundred registered town voters to call a special town meeting before then, the select board would have to do that within forty-five days.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make that clear to the board and to the public.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Angela, I was not trusting my memory.
Thank you.
You came down just for that?
Thank you so much. Okay. All right, so at this point, we, we'll have a draft decision. We've closed the public hearing. Is there a motion to continue PB?
Don't need to do that, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Hearing's closed and when we have a draft, you can?
We can just review that as part of general business.
It'll just be an agenda item.
Fantastic. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're all set.
Thank you.
You're all set. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I request we take a short recess.
Yeah, this one, this took a little while. Let's, we'll take a five-minute recess. Moving on to the next?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Okay, so we are back from our recess. We are moving on to the next public hearing topic. That is PB twenty-three oh three, site plan review at one seventy-four Littleton Road. Yeah. Okay, is there a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing notice?
So move, second.
Motion and a second, waive the reading of the public hearing notice for PB twenty-three oh three. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren? I say aye. Is there a motion to open the meeting for PB twenty-three oh three?
So move, second.
Motion and a second to open PB twenty-three oh three. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. Is the applicant with us? Good evening.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. Hopefully I can make this a little easier for you.
I have, I don't know.
Hey, I said hopefully. I made no promises. I pick my battles, okay? Good evening, members of the board. My name is Katie Oleha. I am with Stonefield Engineering and Design located at one twenty Washington Street, Salem, Massachusetts. We are the civil engineers working with the applicant on this, on these improvements, seeking a special permit to provide an ATM. That said, the applicant is, is seeking to provide a drive-up ATM, which is expected in today's world of modern banking, as ATMs are an essential part of bank operations. The location for said ATM has been chosen as it would not have any off-site impacts and would not impede any flow of traffic throughout the develop, throughout the existing development. The proposed improvements are to be located within an existing shopping center located at one seventy-four Littleton Road. The former CVS space there is being converted to a Chase Bank, the interior renovations of which are already underway. The area of improvement for the ATM that is under discussion, under existing conditions, consists of five parking spaces and a walk-up COVID testing center. I'm not certain if that testing center is still there as of yet, as of now, but it was at the time of our initial survey. Under proposed conditions, that existing building will be equipped with a through-wall ATM with associated security lighting and enhanced pavement marking and signage with the intent to guide customers as to where they should go, as well as relocating the existing five spaces that are at that location so that there is no reduction in existing parking capacity. The drive-up ATM and the associated walk-up, drive-up, walk-up vestibule, I apologize, will be open twenty-four hours a day. With the improvements, there will be no change in parking, parking count and/or demand, as well as there will be an overall net decrease in impervious surfaces. The enhanced security lighting that is provided with these new improvements is an industry, industry standard, and in many states, these are required for ATMs as they provide a safe and secure transaction location. The turning movements throughout this proposed ATM, the circulation has been designed to accommodate, accommodate, excuse me, an Ash-toe P car, which is about twenty feet long and seven feet wide, so roughly the size of an F-two fifty truck. So, that said, with that,
I'm not a car person.
One of the larger pickup truck, basically. And with that, given the fact we were able to run that F-two fifty larger passenger vehicle through, we're very confident that the design can safely accommodate basically any typical vehicle that you may be sending through an ATM, including those large SUVs. As such, in preparation of this application and the development of the proposed improvements, we've ensured that the granting of the special permit will not cause any substantial detriment to the neighborhood and, and/or the town. This time, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Great. Thank you very much. Joe, you're handling this one, right?
Correct.
Anything for us to consider before we go to the board?
Just, as was mentioned, it's currently getting renovated for Chase Bank now. That was an administrative approval by the board back in April of twenty-twenty-two. If you look at the plans that were approved then, essentially where this is going in this little area labeled Equipment Room, which is eighty-two square feet. So the kind of, kind of back end of the ATM and the after-hours depository will be in this Equipment Room of eighty-two square feet.
Can you pull out from that view?
Yeah. Just for, um?
Oh, I see. Okay.
So those are the five parking spaces?
Yeah, the existing parking spaces that would be, you know, pushed away from the building to accommodate the, the driveline for the ATM.
Okay. Okay, so I thought this was the front facade, but this is really that side facade?
Yes.
Correct.
Great.
Currently looks like that.
Yep. Okay. Thanks, Joe. Go to the board for comment. Darren?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I just have a question about, if you were kind of expand that out a little bit, the driving path. So?
Yeah.
You know, I can vision the front of it, and in fact, I know that side very well because of my COVID test over there. But it's basically, so you're going to come in kind of close to where the Whole Foods is? Is there, you know, would you come in the main entrance? Like, if I'm going to go there now, it's like little, it's CVS, you'd park right, you'd kind of come in that way. Would you drive around the corner and then take a wide turn to go through the ATM? I'm just curious how that flow works.
Yes, essentially, you're going to have kind of a wide turn. Again, we have run like a truck through it, a larger truck, so I can provide to the board a kind of exhibit showing generally the path of travel that would take.
I, I kind of like to see the, that, but starting at the street.
Starting at the street. Does the board mind if I hand you something real quick, just to, just to give you a visual?
I think you're going to come in up here, right, to use the ATM to host the coming in here.
While this may not show it directly from the street, it does show that center drive aisle there of how, so you'll be coming in, I guess we're showing a little bit off there, but it will be coming in and kind of working its way, way around. It is a little bit of a tight turn, but generally, again, we've run the truck.
So it will?
There's no, there's no parking over here?
No, that parking's right here.
Okay.
So, yeah, so this is where people can get access to the back?
Mm-hmm.
Of both of the buildings.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Any, any striping or leaning to kind of like indicate that this is where people should queue up if like traffic is starting to curl out?
So we provided a little bit of striping, like, again, along the ATM, that type of striping. We don't have anything further out. That is something that we would have bring up with the landlord. It's a little bit out of our jurisdiction to say. So it's certainly something we can discuss with the landlord, but I, it was kind of out of our rights, really, to put something there.
I will state that? That traffic, I saw a truck. They do come in here to go around the back. And these arrows are like you would expect on a road. The guys are on the right and they would leave on that side. So there, there will be some crossover of traffic when they, when they come out.
Yeah, yeah.
So there, so you'll probably need to have some kind of a yield sign put up because they will be crossing.
You definitely could have like?
Oh, yeah, stop right there, yeah.
From kind of the, not quite the other direction.
The people that are coming in to get access to the backs of the buildings.
Okay, yes, so, so again, something like that, I, I can't necessarily promise. We would have to go back to the landlord and discuss adding additional signage like that, depending on where exactly it's to be located.
Because the problem is that they're going to be crossing.
Right. No, I, I definitely understand and I certainly hear your concern. And as much as I want to say, certainly we'll add that. It's, again, not, you know, we don't own that specific part of the property, so we would, we would need to discuss with the landlords.
So it's, and it also sounds like there's also a parking area for, like, people from Whole Foods and maybe over here, CVS. They have a little parking area right in here. So are you going to be blocking off the end of that parking area with, with landscaping or something?
No, no parking's going to be blocked off. We're essentially?
I mean, not, no, like, it, it's, it, it kind of ends in where a sidewalk is now. Is that sidewalk going to stay there?
Yes, the sidewalk will stay. We're not going to impact that. We're not going to impact the existing crosswalk, anything that's there. The only quote-unquote parking that will be impacted would be those five spaces that are against the building that we're simply relocating. So we're just?
Are they going to be?
So they will be provided.
They're just kicking them away from the building, right, here.
Yeah. Do you have any chance of the site plan, the third sheet?
Then they need some kind of a barrier here, like all these trucks that are coming in, maybe?
Yes, so?
That, that, one of my concerns has to do with that truck turning area for the loading dock at Whole Foods.
Yeah.
Really, I really want to see a plan for this. I, I, that was the only thing I'm really disappointed by in the application, is the lack of a traffic flow plan. I am concerned, I want to see specifically how the lane is laid out. Going to have to worry about pedestrian markings up there because they may have to get changed, as well as the ability for the trucks to turn around. And I also like to make sure that that plan is adequately reviewed by fire and safety. Because they're obviously going to want to look at what happens when that queue is at its maximum, when you have trucks in there and the ability to get a fire truck in the back of that.
Well, this shouldn't block any, any trucks there that, if there's a fire, and there are big trucks, this isn't going to affect them. You really need to, maybe in our next packet, you can get this for our next?
Of course.
Because he's remote.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I, Kate, but I just would like to see it in writing and I'd like to see the precise, make sure everybody's reviewed it and make sure, other, you know, comfortable with this for the, for the talk.
Yeah, and, and fired apparatus, I assume?
Well, I don't need a fire needs to get?
There's, there's, that's not an issue.
No, I think, I do agree with Bob that it would be helpful to have this, some sort of a traffic flow diagram, like, really in the packet so that we can kind of see how you're thinking of the traffic circulation.
Okay.
I think the one thing that I see is, it looks like if there were, and maybe this doesn't really happen at ATMs all that much, but if, it looks to me like if you had five cars in queue, one at the ATM and four behind it, you, it might almost be difficult for somebody parked in one of the parking spots to actually back out of the spot.
Which, understood, and we definitely hear that, but truthfully, that's, it's such, it's not something that really happens. I mean, during a peak hour, you're not seeing more than, say, fourteen trips total to the bank and ATM during a peak hour.
But, but, but you do need to redo the movement of your F-two truck because you had them coming in the out on the wrong side of the, the road.
I did notice that as I hinted at.
You need to make sure that a large vehicle would still have the ability to turn in there.
Yeah.
Because I know, I just think of the bank there on, at the Plaza in twenty-seven, and my car barely makes it. So I'd hate to set up a condition like that here.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly do another similar exhibit to that. As far as getting into the ATM itself, we, we are not concerned from an engineering perspective, but I, I do hear what you're saying about the start of our turning there is, we're a little off.
On the wrong side of the road.
But at least it's in the drive aisle, not the?
My other, my other recollection was that for those truck lanes coming down, at one time, I seem to recall, there was signage there that limited who could come down that. And it was limited to trucks and authorized vehicles, basically employee vehicles. And I, I think maybe we need to go back and make sure the site plan review package for these properties doesn't have that condition still in there with such signage. And that, that signage may just be missing. It may actually be in the package.
Yeah, because they have large trailer, no, trailer trucks with food coming in and things for CVS and Whole Foods. They're not in little minivans.
And there may be insurance issues with how this package is socialized with the owner's insurance companies for these parcels. We just got to make sure everything is properly documented and that we haven't violated one of the conditions we, our, our board put down in the past.
Okay.
Jeff's thinking about that.
No, it sounds like Bob, one of Bob's concerns is that there might be a prior approval by this board that placed restrictions on the use of that area. This board certainly would have the authority to amend that with this application.
Yeah.
But you just want to know, what's the starting point? Was there such a restriction?
Yeah.
I know Joe started searching that.
Exactly. I spoke, I spoke with, uh, Joe earlier today about that concern.
I did.
And so I just want to make sure we're doing everything by the books with respect to this property. And that's why I'd like to see a more detailed plan, as, as I think Kate and others said, regarding the traffic flow, um, and how that all fits. And make sure that that information gets appropriately shared with the engineering and fire and safety for review.
Thank you, Bob. I, I did start looking through prior decisions of this board for this property. I didn't find anything that related to limiting this area to any particular kind of vehicle. I'm happy to continue to look, um, but from the time I did spend after our call, I did not find anything that spoke to any condition on this area.
Yeah, I think traffic flow is the, the main thing we all want to kind of take a better handle on, yeah.
Yeah.
How that works.
I have some note that I don't remember why. Proposed engineering request?
I think it may have been from staff. It was kind of a similar, I think, concern, just in terms of, you know, what kind of vehicle was used for this, uh, turning track? Does it make sense to have engineering take a look at
Gotcha.
that to ensure it's been done properly.
My comment was, no, I want it to be part of the hearing. Okay, thanks. Uh...
Anything else, Kate?
I'm gonna look, if you want to keep talking.
I, I agree with all you guys. We've come back with the showing of the traffic pattern.
Yep.
Can we serve coffee at that drive-up?
No.
Well, if you open it.
Yeah.
Only if you open it and count there.
It won't be secure.
More of us, so...
Hey, uh, Bob, any other comments? So, yeah, I mean, yeah, I think you've made the comment of wanting to see that, like, uh, the full plan and have it reviewed by engineering for the next meeting. Any other topics you want to touch on?
Not really, no. Uh, my, my concern has to do really with, um, uh, the traffic flow. And, um, I just remind everybody, when we had the discussions at town meetings regarding drive-through windows for fast food restaurants.
Yep.
The big concern was pedestrian traffic crossing, uh, active lanes of, of, of cars. So I think we have to do the same due diligence here.
Yep.
That's all I, I'm concerned about.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good point, Bob.
Good point. Kate, any, uh, final comments?
I haven't found any. Let me get to the end. I just remember it was just traffic and I was trying to understand the landscaping I didn't get, but... I...
You mean, uh, landscaping plan?
Yeah, there was some talk about landscaping. I'm like, there really isn't any landscaping there now.
It wasn't so much like new trees and shrubs, more so that we are adding a landscape island and reducing impervious area, not so much providing a full-blown new landscape around the development.
Gotcha.
Oh, that's the island there you're talking?
Yeah, so, just, just a...
It's just that little...
Yeah, just, just a small pound, part, portion of a landscape island, um, just to aid in circulation and separation.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not in the front of the store?
No, no.
And you're not, and you said you're not getting rid of the pedestrian walkway that's there, so you're not touching that?
Correct.
You're just touching the pavement that's there.
Yep, we're, we're, in the grand scheme of things, really doing very little as far as, uh, the actual surface improvements, more so, more so just, uh, cleaning it up, adding some safety circulation, moving the parking. It's, it's nothing, you know, not adding a whole new building or anything along those lines.
Okay. You're, you haven't reviewed this, have you?
Yes, yeah, no, we didn't. You, you've covered everything that we...
One more thing?
What, yeah, I, it, there's no safety issue, so we didn't write any comments down, but, you know, the, the circulation, you know, signage to get people in and out.
Yep.
Realize there is a median, a, a, a traffic island that separates, that is two properties there, uh, or there were two properties. I don't know if they're co-ownership now, they're, but, um, yeah, you covered everything that...
So the people parking, they were coming down that driveway and they would pull into there. And then how about backing so that...
There's a, they'd have to stop as they try to exit?
So they just, they would be backing out to, there aren't a lot of trucks there, so it's like backing out anywhere.
Oh, the people parked, you're saying, in those parking spots?
Parking, yeah, the new parking spots. They would just be pulling in and then...
Backing out?
Backing out. I don't see a problem with that as long as they look.
Mm-huh. Yeah, I just would like to see a more detailed, yeah, traffic circulation plan and, and signage plan. Would be great. Uh, okay. Yeah, go to the public. Is there anybody here from the public who would like to comment on PB twenty-three-oh-three, um, Chase Bank, uh, ATM drive-through for one-seventy-four Littleton Road? Okay, seeing none. Um, is there a...
It sounds like you may want to have that plan submitted to staff to review, uh, for your next meeting, March sixth. Would you like a draft decision for then?
I was gonna say, uh, is there a motion to ask staff to prepare a draft decision in this case?
So move.
Second.
Motion in the second to ask staff to prepare a draft decision to consider along with an updated, uh, traffic circulation plan for our next meeting. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
One more request, Dylan.
Sure.
If you expand on that traffic flow, can you kind of, can you go over to the right a little bit so you can kind of capture the loading dock for Whole Foods as well?
As far as just the plan view?
Yeah.
Certainly.
Loading dock is right across there. I'm just, like to get a perspective on how close that is for, for kind of backing.
We'll give you this, this back. I mean, I really think this is about the right dimensional thing, but I don't think we have that in the packet.
So if we don't have that, I need to at least make a copy so we can include that for our public record.
Yeah, we don't have it.
And I'm sure we don't want...
Maybe one there.
Our engineering department to commence their review until they have benefited the revised set of plans with the site circulation.
Yep.
Information.
I just think it would be useful to see it going all the way to this, that driveway or whatever you want to call it, that...
Yep.
Going all the way to the road so you appreciate...
How traffic's moving through that entire space.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yep.
Continue.
Yep, unless there's any further comment. Um, so will we need an extension in time then, Jeff? Joe?
We can, if the applicant is willing to grant one for an extension of time.
Great.
Uh, I move that we continue PB, where are we?
Twenty-three-oh-three?
Twenty-three-oh-three, uh, request for a special permit till our next meeting, March sixth, seven PM in this meeting room.
Second. Motion in the second to continue PB twenty-three-oh-three to March sixth. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Oh, you need a photocopy, Jeff?
Yeah, we, it's now been in...
It's all yours. We have it in our server. You're good.
Thanks very much.
But, yeah, we will, we will, of course, include a, a part of the actual package.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
I would say for the criteria, I didn't have any problems with...
Raising the drainage calculations?
Well, like she had responded for all of the, uh, the criteria. I, I was okay with the response.
We can always discuss it.
Not now because, uh...
We've continued?
We're not, yeah, 'cause we continue.
Yeah, well. Okay.
She's got you. She's right. She's got you.
I mean...
Sometimes I know what I'm doing.
Excuse me if the board doesn't mind. So the, just a thought, um, we're hoping for an opening for the actual Chase itself within about sixty days. Um, and is there any possibility that we would be able to get this, I, understanding that we've been continued to the next meeting? Is there any potential that we'd be able to get this approval within the next sixty days so we can kind of align it along with the opening of the Chase, the interior Chase portion as well?
You're looking at an approval within the next sixty days?
Well, then it, there's an appeal period, right? So we have to prove it and then...
So we would approve it in, probably in our meeting in March.
In March sixth.
And then you have the three weeks.
Does that...
Yeah, the opening day, actually, it's, uh, three-twenty-eight.
So, Mr. Chair, I understand that they're, they're already constructing this, or are they, that you...
Not the ATM, the interior renovations for the Chase itself. The ATM not under construction by any means, but the interior renovations are, are underway.
They had prior approval for that.
Yes.
Yeah.
It was an administrative back in April, twenty-twenty-two.
So...
I, yes, because you're not going to be doing any paving or earthwork or anything else until April fifteenth, so I don't know how that fits into the sixty-day, um, cycle there.
So, I mean, you...
Restriction, not limited to roadways and subdivision?
So you can't get the building permit either until the appeal period is over, correct?
Well, no, they've already have the...
No, for the ATM.
For the ATM.
Right.
So, so that's, won't be done probably before your opening anyway.
Special permit, and it is potentially possible to exercise the rights under a special permit at their own peril during the appeal period. They would normally have to sign their life away to the billing commissioner, acknowledging that they understand the risk, and if appealed, they might be required to rip everything out at their own cost, risk, and expense.
We'll discuss that part with the applicant. Just wanted to throw it out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Yep, have a great evening.
You as well.
Okay. Um, so we've gotten through two topics. We are on to, uh, all right, the next topic is PB twenty-three-oh-four, uh, a zoning topic to amend the zoning by law to expand opportunities for and to create a commercial recreation overlay district, section eight-point-nine.
Will we waive the reading, the notice?
So, second.
Motion in the second to waive the reading of the public hearing notice for PB twenty-three-oh-four. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Uh, Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
A public hearing?
Um, a second.
Motion in the second to open PB twenty-three-oh-four. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. We are open.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will try to be generally brief, but for the benefit of those that may be hearing this for the first time tonight, uh, this board in prior discussions has, uh, agreed to sponsor a zoning bylaw amendment to expand opportunities for commercial recreation in town. It generally consists of two different approaches. As you may recall, right now, um, commercial recreation or indoor/outdoor commercial recreation is only allowed in the commercial highway zoning district in town with benefit of a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. And so the first part of the proposal is to expand that into additional, um, districts in town, say the industrial A, B, C, and the industrial H zoning districts. And Joe, you'll correct me if I'm missing one, but, um, and so that would be a simple change to Appendix A. And currently, the proposal is to change the special permit granting authority from the zoning board of appeals to the planning board. Um, the thought behind that is most of these applications will actually all require a public hearing process with the planning board anyhow for site plan review. Many of them also would require a special permit of some kind for major commercial project or, or otherwise. And so to a lot, it would streamline the permitting, cut down on the number of public hearings, um, which is not a small cost these days. Um, a public hearing notice for this was just over a thousand dollars, um, right now, just for the legal ad. It doesn't require, include all the other hard costs associated with it. And many would find, um, it would shorten the permitting process significantly because you wouldn't have to go to the zoning board, secure an approval, perhaps await the appeal period, and then move on to the planning board process. So it would save months and thousands of dollars. So the second part of the process is, um, to create an overlay district for benefit of Kimball Farm and the Shoba Valley Ski Area. So I'm sure most of you are all familiar with these. Um, it's a little interesting. Um, so the permitting for Kimball Farm in the past has been a hodgepodge. It's been where it's the commercial highway, which is generally the first two-hundred feet from Littleton Road. They've been able to use that special permit tool, but there's other areas that lie within the residence A zoning district, and they have had to secure use variances from the zoning board of appeals, um, in order to have the commercial recreation in those areas. And every time they want to come in for a change or modification, they need another public hearing process to do that, usually a use variance, followed by planning board public hearing process. And similar things are true for the Shoba Valley Ski Area. Um, a lot of their areas actually Residence A. They do have some commercial highway, but a lot of the improvements are in the residence zoning district. Um, and it's difficult for them to contemplate any long-term planning efforts. I know they're trying to, uh, make some efforts to sort of expand, um, that to be more of a year-round thing. It's very challenging from an employment perspective to have that intermittent staffing, uh, for residence, a lot of challenges. And I know Attorney Robbins is here tonight on behalf of the Shoba Valley Ski Area. She may want to chime in on that later. Uh, we have received, um, some comments for the board's consideration. Uh, we've received some from the Recreation Commission. We've received some from the attorneys representing Kimball Farm and the Shoba Valley Ski Area, and we've also received comments from the zoning board of appeals. Uh, to summarize the zoning board's comments, generally, they're actually very supportive of this process. Um, however, they would like to retain jurisdiction as the special permit granting authority, I think is their big takeaway comment. Um, and then we have the red lines available in the board's packet. I will say the comments that were received from the two attorneys, I think they're good comments, and I think we should think about including those. Another thing that I thought of too late is, uh, given that some of the underlying zoning districts for both of these is in the Residence A zoning district, that is different height limitations than, say, the commercial highway. And if you take a look at, say, Kimball's and, uh, perhaps some future concepts for Nishoba, it seems to make sense that they're gonna need to be seeking relief relative to height, even if it's to just match commercial highway. I think the board might want to consider, um, maybe allowing some flexibility from the special permit granting authority to allow some, some kind of exceedances for height. Not without limit, but it just seems like that's going to come up if we're trying to streamline and consolidate the public hearing processes. They're gonna end up going to zoning board first, coming back to planning board, and it might be, uh, an iterative and complicated process. So with that as a start, um, I'll turn it over to the board and happy to try to answer any questions.
Great, thanks. Anybody care to go first? On that, Bob?
Uh, I don't have anything substantial. I've read through the packet and, yeah, as, as Jeff just stated, um, the comments from the, um, uh, attorneys, reasonable. I think, yeah, we can add those. Um, but no, I think overall this has proceeded very well, and I appreciate all the work town staff has done on this with respect to, uh, conducting the survey. Um, I guess the one aspect that we need to probably discuss, I know that we have an objection from the ZBA, uh, regarding the change in the special permit granting authority. Um, and, and somehow, we're gonna have to, um, negotiate that. So that's all I have.
Yep. Thanks, Bob. Kate?
Thanks, Bob. Um, I was thinking about that from the ZBA and I know for all these other ones, we have a requirement that they go to fire, police, conservation, board of health to get, uh, comments. And while I appreciate the ZBA, they, they do have a lot of experience with this kind of, uh, thing. I can understand the streamlining process and the benefit to all, to both staff as well as the applicants. So is there a way we could just make a requirement that this type of thing also requires comments from the CBA?
So it's not unheard of. I think we've done it before in your own bylaw. You could, uh, require the applicants to seek a non-binding recommendation, uh, from the zoning board of appeals, and that would become, uh, part of the information that this board could consider.
So I, 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 I think that would be a good compromise.
I would agree with that. Bob, you okay with that?
Yeah, I, I think that's fine.
Great.
Um... Appendix A, you have to wrap your head around this. We're making it quote by right or without a, an overlay district in all of those industrial zones with a, a special permit from the planning board. And we're creating this overlay zone so that these areas, these commercial, existing commercial recreation places that have part industrial and part residential, don't have to go through onerous processes. And I understand that, but I don't understand why... And I understand that, but I don't understand why we're putting a special permit for the planning board for outdoor recreation in all residential zones.
What, you mean, do you mean winter commercial?
Yeah.
So, right now, it's allowed by a special permit with the zoning board. We're just trying to-
It's just amending it.
It's just amending it to be with the planning board instead of the zoning board. That's, so it's going from SPA to SPB.
Okay.
We also, but to your point, Kate, we also, there are some, like in the commercial highway district? That's prohibited.
Strangely enough, it's prohibited.
I know we had this discussion where we looked at the zoning maps, and there was, so, this is based on our votes that we took, right?
Yes.
Alrighty, so we thought this commercial highway is, that's one ten.
It's almost with, I think, one exception, Makepeace Road. It's generally along Littleton Road. As is a lot of the industrial highway, but it also includes portions, it includes Liberty Way, which actually, on your survey, the commercial recreation survey we did, was very highly supported for adding commercial recreation to Liberty Way. So, there are some other areas, IAs, and they vary. Some of the industrial A areas, they are higher likelihood to be surrounded by residential properties. And so, clearly, special permit, you know, at most. We definitely want the board to have discretion, because in some cases, even though it's in the district, may not make sense. So, this would give you that discretion.
Okay. And I know both the attorneys for both Kimball's and the Shoba had requests, and... I wasn't, I wasn't really in favor of either request. So, but I'm, I'm happy to talk about them and hear other members' comments, and then bring them up, and what are the requests? And why am I not for them? And then I also have something about input from town council. Has, has town council had a chance to review yet? Sorry?
Yes, town council. We've had a lot of communication with council, and yes, they have looked at this. One of the other features is in the commercial recreation overlay district as proposed. This board would have the opportunity to authorize other accessory uses that are deemed by you to be accessory to the overarching commercial recreation use. So it can't, it's not without limit. It has to make sense. You have to find that it ties to the overall use. And so, it'd give you the discretion to authorize those as well as part of the special permit process. I think one of the comments, at least one of the comments received is, you know, sometimes the board may authorize, and they cite examples. I think there's concern that there might be three examples listed, but they don't want it to be misconstrued as only those three.
Yeah.
So, that's, I think, I think that's fine, because that's our intent, is to say, hey, if this board finds it makes sense, it's reasonable, you have discretion to say no if you don't like it, you can do that. We're not, we can't think of everything that might be accessory, and so we'd like to keep it as broad and open as, as possible. And I think they just want to make sure that the language matches the intent, so it's not subject to misinterpretation. So, I, I like that.
Yep, okay. And my last thing, it's just, change some wording in sections eight, nine, four, and eight, nine, five. You might want to, it might require a search, because you have that section that says the special granting authority is the planning board. But then, in some of the other sections, you don't say the special, you have to get this from the special permit granting authority. You say, "The planning board will." And so, I, I recommend that anywhere in, in this new section of the bylaw where it says "planning board", that you replace that with "special permit granting authority", just in case down the road we change who it is.
Okay.
I just, just to make, make it clear, because why do you have to have a special permit granting authority section if you're always citing the planning board?
I'm fine just running that by council. I don't see a reason to object. Maybe there is, but I don't, can't think of what it is now.
But I've just, just for clarity and, and-
Well, I think to the casual reader, after the first or second SPGA, maybe their eyes gloss over, and maybe it's easier to see a board.
Like eight, nine, five says it's, a special permit is required by the planning board. And then you say, "The planning board is the special permit granting authority."
Okay, we're happy to look at that.
Yes, so, that, that's been, having a linguistic mother who used to wrap my knuckles, I- She did with a knife.
Oh. Okay.
So. Too much information, I know.
I'm going to disagree with Kate, I might get whacked over there.
I like Attorney Robbins' comments. I like also Jeff's comment about height. I would be in favor of that. Maybe if we just even match commercial highway, or just say we have some discretion on, really from the height restrictions. That's all I have.
I'm sure you might, we're happy to take a stab at that. I'm sure you want it to have some limitations, so I would imagine, you know, whatever the height is, you probably want it situated from whatever lot lines by at least that much, right? Full zone, well on the property, so we can take a look at that.
Darren?
I like the input about the comments from ZBA, they were great.
Yes.
My only, I like the comments from the attorneys as well. The only question I had was about the short-term housing. Melissa, do you mind?
Sure. Out for the record, Melissa Robbins. I'm here on behalf of the Shoba Valley Ski Area. And my only suggestion in adding that is the new bylaw already allows for hotels. So if you see some of these year-round amenity-type ski resorts, especially up in New Hampshire, not only do they allow for hotels, but they also have these townhouses that go along with the hotels that are more family-style layout. They're short-term rentals, much like a hotel, but they would allow for that. The way that it's written right now would not allow for that. So that was really the reason to ask for it. If we're going to make a little village area with year-round amenities, with year-round staff that people are going to come and stay at, it would be a necessary addition. And the same thing for parking structures. If we're going to add these type of amenities, certainly indoor commercial recreation, that needs a lot of parking. And parking lots don't always work to allow for that amount of vehicles, so we will need the allowance for parking structures for these type of amenities that we're going to run out of land to do it on. So, really, those are my two big changes to the bylaw. Everything else looked great. And the Shoba Valley Ski Area is excited to try to take advantage of the crud. It's terrible. It really will streamline the process. It'll put it into the bylaws, what's allowed and not allowed. Right now, we do really have to struggle with what's allowed and not allowed. You can see the white area, the residential area for the Shoba Valley Ski Area is mostly residential. So every single time we have to do a sheet out there, we have to go through a very convoluted permitting process. We can't tell investors or anybody else that wants to come do an amenity out there, or an indoor commercial recreation, that we would get it approved. And this would give them an allowance that you could go through a special permit process. So given that's ten eighteen, may I ask a question?
Can I?
That's helpful, thank you.
Yes.
I actually had an issue with that, now that I'm going through all my notes on, on section eight, nine, four. It does say, the, 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 additional accessory uses. And the two that I did have an issue with were hotel and business or professional office. And I, I have an issue with hotel, because how can you limit a hotel to just people who are going to go skiing, or going to go swimming? Like, a hotel, if it's there, they're going to use it for anybody else who wants to stay in it as well. So I, I just see it as expanding hotels into residential areas, and I, I- But, but, yeah, I know, but-
And not as a matter of right, either.
But, it, it's not, it, a hotel goes beyond just supporting, supporting-
I mean, I guess in theory, yes.
It's kind of, it's not like, I, I suppose like chalets. You're thinking chalets, chalets, chalets.
I envision, so, the Shoba builds a hockey rink, and it has hockey tournaments.
Sure.
It puts a place where people could stay there and do the whole thing, right there at the Shoba.
We have other hotels in town that are hurting.
We're trying to support this business, so.
Yeah, but they're hurting for business too.
If they're bringing up hockey tournament, they're probably spilling over.
I, just personally, I, I, I have an issue with that. Because I think of hotels as more than five rooms, or ten rooms, you know?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, we're just saying that that's a potential use that we would have to hear, and we'd have to understand the narrative behind that, and how does that tie into what's being put into the crud? Does that hotel or that, you know, temporary short-term housing, like, support something that the applicant is seeking to do that would attract people to there? I mean, I guess people could, in theory, just stay there because they're interested in staying there.
Yeah.
I mean, if so, then, okay. I mean, but I think, you know, I don't-
I, I just have a philosophical issue with that, so.
With hotels?
A hotel goes beyond just supporting a recreation use.
Yeah.
Well, I think that, that would, if it's in there, I mean, it's, you have to be determined to be accessory use, and it would have to be approved by this board. So if it's, you know, they're building a three thousand room hotel for a thirty-seat hockey rink, then I would agree.
Yeah, that would be excessive.
But I think that we're given the discretion and the ability of the board to make that, that choice, in my opinion.
What if it's a water park with a-
Like a Great Wolf Lodge, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's where I think of like a hotel, that's, you're going to stay there because you're going to use the amenity.
So with the short-term housing, we're talking about potentially a hotel or something, but are we also saying that then the, the crud would be exempt from the actions that we took within the zoning bylaws for, say, Airbnbs or, you know, VRBOs? Are we basically saying that, like, there could be owner's property-
Saying that, like, say, I don't know, say they reorganize their skiing area, and say they put in some, you know, townhomes or something that, and say they're doing, you know, training or something, or a special program, you know, for three days or a week, or whatever it is. There'd be an opportunity to rent those out, I'd imagine, so they could do those-
But respectfully, some ski places might own those properties and lease them, but in other cases, I think ski places sell those properties, and then those owners then sublease them through Airbnb or otherwise. So it's, I guess I'm asking, are we doing, are we saying both could apply to the crud? Or are we just solving for if the applicant wants to open townhomes, a ho, small hotel, a B and B, whatever, we would entertain that?
So I believe the special permit granting authority would have the discretion to say, "This is going to be by the overall property owner who's managing the overall facility." Planning board could also have discretion. You say they had for sale units. But I don't know that, I think the board would look differently at that. You would have, again, with the special permit, you have discretion to say no. But like Mike was saying, whether it's a hotel, or eight rooms, or a townhouse, you know, whatever, some village style, you have the discretion to say no. You have to find it's truly accessory. Is, is a, say there's a ownership that's other than someone managing the property, and they want to rent out, is, is that really accessory to the overall commercial recreation use? I think the argument gets more and more flimsy the further away you get from that. So I think it's easier to say no.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Developing and selling slope-side condos is not accessory.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was not my intention. It was for short-term rentals only.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To benefit the uses at the property for commercial recreation. Just like a New Hampshire ski mountain that has year-round amenities, you have to have people that stay, and you have to have jobs for your staff, so your staff stays there year-round. If you make the use of seasonal, and you don't give people work for year-round, your year-round business won't work. So if you're trying to put these overlays on two businesses that already have commercial recreation in town, you have to give them the chance to grow and have the amenities so they can keep the staff.
Right.
Or you'll end up with teenagers and college kids and won't be able to do it.
Okay. And I very much liked your suggestion with regard to the zoning board's objection.
In general, I agree with Attorney Robbins' request to, to modify the intro or whatever. I just would like to change a few words. It says that the intent of the bylaw is to encourage growth and expansion of the businesses in the overlay district, and to me, the intent of the bylaw is to facilitate-
Promote?
It's to improve the process. That's why we're doing it. It's not because we're part of the Business Development Committee, and our purpose here is to encourage the growth of them. Because I have some reservations about a lot of growth, but it's more to make the process, to facilitate the process, the, the approval process for, for the businesses in the district, rather than encouraging the growth.
Okay.
Let me see what else I have. Keep talking.
Well, I, I think we can go to the public. If anybody from the public has comments on PB 2304? No?
I think that was my last one.
Okay. Good. So, Jeff, what are the next steps then?
Well, it would be to continue to March sixth.
Yep.
We're going to take the comments we heard tonight.
Yep.
We're going to run that by town council. We're going to communicate your suggestion to the zoning board about the seeking their input as a requirement.
Do you want me to send you and/or Joe some sort of a draft letter?
It's up to you. We can send it, or you can send it. It's fine.
Well, I'll send you something as a response, and then you can tailor that as you see fit.
We'll put that in their next packet.
Great.
And we'll get their feedback for you.
Okay, good. So we'll have some amended language to consider on March sixth.
Yes, sir.
Fantastic.
I make a motion that we continue PB 2304, amend, amend zoning bylaw to our next meeting, March sixth, seven o'clock here at the Town Hall.
Motion in the second to continue PB 2304 to our March sixth meeting. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are on to general business. We have already continued item A and item B. That brings us to item C under general business, which is PB 2213, a request for minor modifications to a scenic road permit and stormwater management permit. Good evening.
Good evening. It's been a long night.
You've put in the work tonight.
Yeah, I did. Yes, I did. Well, I really, I put in the time. I didn't put in the work. Good evening. Mark Slager from Allen Engineering here on behalf of Premium Homes and KC Building, and I think KMR. I'm not sure which one, but they're all the same person. Anyway, we have a stormwater permit for fifty-nine and sixty-three Hildreth Street, and we also have a scenic road permit for fifty-nine Hildreth Street that we would like to amend. Basically, they're minor amendments that go, what I would say, in town's favor. Basically, do you have the plan that I said? It is fairly simple. We originally had an approval for two driveway openings to serve house number fifty-nine. We'd like to eliminate one and restore the stone wall in that location. We've eliminated, that's it for the scenic road permit modification. The rest is just stormwater. Basically, we've eliminated a lot of the driveway pavement, reduced the patio area, we reduced the size of the pool, changed the footprint of the house a little bit, and the roof drain system- And the roof drain systems, we had one larger system, it was, um, septic system in the front. Uh, the roof drain systems have been separated into three smaller systems to better accommodate the downspouts for the roof gutters. Um, and the only other modification would be to one of the basins in the front, we're changing it from a rain garden to just a grass basin. The overflow from the grass basement would, basement, uh, would go into the rain garden on the other side of the site, so it would still provide the appropriate level of treatment. And we're still mitigating all of the runoff and not having an increase from the site, so, that's it.
Just ask curious, are you gonna move the driveway or the lot line? Does that lot line cut right through the, the new driveway?
The lot line does cut through the driveway, but there's an exclusive use area for that particular area and.
Oh, because of the rain g- basement?
Well, because of the, the grass basin there and because of the driveway, uh, the owner of fifty-nine is gonna be responsible for all of the stormwater BMPs with the exception of the roof drain for house number sixty-three.
Makes sense.
So you don't have to do a separate easement?
There is an easement in place already.
But you don't have to do a separate one for the driveway?
No, it's an exclusive use, it includes everything.
Okay.
Yeah, so in summary, the footprint of the house is slightly smaller, the pool is slightly smaller.
Driveway's smaller, one less curving.
And, and more stone wall on the scenic way.
Mm-hmm.
It does sound favorable to the town.
Engineering is reviewing.
Yep, this is, everything submitted properly and works for us.
Understanding, um, anybody from the board have questions or comments?
That was my own question.
Bob, anything?
I do not have any, I, all the answers, all my questions were answered in that discussion.
Okay, great, uh, you know, it's a general business topic, anybody from the audience, comments? No? Okay.
So, I motion for PB two-two one-three, uh, we allow the request for the minor modification as provided by the plans, the, for the scenic road permit and the stormwater management permit.
Second, is that, is that worded over?
It's glorious.
Um, okay, uh, motion and a second to, uh, accept the request for the minor modifications to PB twenty-two thirteen, uh, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience.
All right, we're on to item, uh, D. Item D, which is a request for non-binding recommendations to the Select Board for, uh, the Burn Place Extension Street Acceptance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer, so we're, this is a, one of multiple, many, multiple detailed steps in the street acceptance process, which is appropriate because we don't just accept any street. Uh, you, you recall that I come in previously with the residents, uh, doing this through a betterment, meaning that they are paying for the costs, uh, themselves a- among the estates. Uh, and, uh, we agreed that we would use the same footprint, the width of the road, uh, the drainage was sufficient, didn't need improvement, uh, and we've completed the work, I'm happy to say. And, uh, we're able to do it efficiently and effectively, went to the Select Board and asked them to vote their intentions to lay out a public way. And, and refer to the Planning Board for non-binding recommendation. We'll bring your recommendation, uh, uh, for acceptance or not back to the Select Board and then they will lay out the way and then, uh, go to Town Meeting and Town Meeting, uh, will have the final say. So that's where we are, we're just here for a non-binding, uh, ask that you, uh, support this at, uh, to the Select Board and to the Town Me- Town Meeting on March twenty-fifth.
Great, thank you, Paul. Uh, anybody have comments?
No, I think the, uh, the people who live on the street for taking their time themselves to do this and.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be good. Yep, it's come out, very good, if you've been through there, you, i- you can now pass, this was, uh, um, once proposed to be the, the movie set for any, anything involved moon or the moon surface or craters. Anything like that, anything involved the moon, you wanna go to that.
I lost a kid in the public.
Seriously, I, I swung over there, uh, over the weekend because I couldn't believe it, because I remember the old road, I hadn't been on it and it's completely different, you would not recognize it.
Oh, yeah. Amen. Yeah.
Yeah.
Should I, um, motion that we recommend to the Select Board to accept Burn Place Extension?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I just make a request?
Sure.
Would you be willing to, um, make that, but also indicate that it's your favorable recommendation to Town Meeting as well?
Yep.
Agreed.
Okay, friendly amendment, uh, okay?
Yep. Second.
Motion and a second, uh, to recommend to the Select Board and to Town Meeting, uh, the Burn Place Extension Street Acceptance, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Excellent.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Have a good evening.
Shoot right out of here.
Yeah.
Duck it out early, huh?
Okay, that brings us to item E, uh, which is a discussion to take positions on annual Town Meeting articles and any other actions related there too, so we've tackled one. Get through all of these calculations. One second.
Do we have to do anything like on, uh, Article? Article five, where there's money earmarked for, uh, Boston Road reconstruction?
So, you don't have to, um, so the reason we, uh, show you this warrant, just in case, if there is something that you do wanna weigh in on, I do know there were three articles, um, that you're being asked to weigh in on. Two of which are zoning and you're obligated to act on, uh, one of which you just took action on, um, by including the Town Meeting, uh, vote in addition to Select Board. So it's just, we have no other requests for you, it's just if you feel the desire or need, um, you can act on others if so inclined.
Maybe at a, a later meeting, Engineering could give us an update on the Boston Road, because the last I saw it was like at twenty-five or fifty percent, I forget.
At low, okay.
I, I know they were talking about, should they paint the, uh.
Why don't we, uh. Jeff?
But I'm just saying that if we don't, if we don't need to take a, uh.
No, you don't need to, but there's no harm in getting, you know, an update from Town Engineering.
Yeah, but you don't need to make a position for it.
You don't need to. So we, we just took a vote for Article twenty-two, Jeff, the other two you're talking about are nineteen and twenty? Correct. Well, should we have the conversation then in item F about seven Carl Thompson Road before we?
I would not do that until you actually hold the public hearing process for that zoning bylaw amendment.
Because you wouldn't want to take a position now when you haven't even opened the public hearing.
I think, are we saying the same thing?
It's not a public hearing.
When do we take?
What do you, wait. So. I, I'm saying, do we wanna, should we take item F first before we do item E in general business?
Oh, in general business? It's really independent? You're completely one?
What am I missing?
So. So I believe item F is in reaction to the citizens' petition.
Ah, okay.
Do you want me to explain?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so for seven Carl Thompson Road, and yes, we have confirmed for Town Council. The filing of an A and R plan would provide a three-year zoning freeze for uses, for changes in use relative to the zoning bylaws, so if. The citizens' petition passes and that lot changes from IA to RA, um, the lot owner could try to assert the current zoning bylaw that's in place today relative to uses. There are some limitations and nuances, but I strongly suspect, given that they're not changing any of the lot lines, um, it, it is a legal way to create a zoning freeze. And we did confirm that with Town Council today. And we did send them the actual A and R application and the plan. They do believe it does qualify, because at the end of the day, remember, an A and R plan, you're not really approving anything. All you are signing is the fact that it's not a subdivision. But, under mass general law, that can create a three-year zoning freeze.
Okay.
No, I don't, I didn't look it up on our maps, I don't even know where.
Where are you looking from?
Carl Thompson Road is.
South Route forty, backs up to Forest Road, South Route forty, on the south side of.
Go down Russell's Way, go.
Okay. Oh, yeah, got it, okay. Because it says in the notes, the purpose of this plan is to show the single lot as described in deed book and, and, so nothing's changed, so it's just for the purposes.
That's my. Understanding.
So we're talking seventeen, Article seventeen?
Uh, I believe it's nineteen and twenty, hold on. Select Board has to act on seventeen, I don't know, do we have to vote to accept even, I think we could take action on that if we want to.
Well, so it says, they have a little thing at the bottom, sixteen, seventeen for easements.
Yeah.
So we did specifically request Engineering, if they wanted the Planning Board to take action on any of these easements and they did not, uh, make that request, they were fine with. Not, but you're free to take whatever positions or not you'd like to.
Well, it's kinda hard taking a position on the easements when you don't know what the easements are.
Well, I think for the easements, like for the ones that we approved and was it the Cloverleaf one, right, so that was part of that subdivision?
We're talking about, I think.
The Boston Road.
Seventeen is Boston Road improvements.
This is Boston Road.
About seventeen.
Yeah, sixteen is Old Lowell Road.
Oh, yeah, yep.
So we already have, um, easements were approved by prior Town Meeting that, uh, they're following through many times on, on those easements for a variety of projects. If they don't hurry up on some of them, they, they may, may need another Town Meeting approval, so it's not on the warrant.
So this Carl Thompson Road, this is the existing road, right, this?
Yes.
This bulb is the existing road?
Yes.
So they're looking to simply change, Joe had the graphic up, it shows, if you can look at the screen, so they're looking to change the underlying zoning from industrial A to residence. That's the proposal by the citizens' petition.
And the, and the A and R is just to grant, just to.
That's my suspicion.
Free the current zoning.
That is my suspicion, yes.
For three years.
Three years.
What happens after three years?
Then it, it, it falls under whatever the.
Okay.
Underlying zoning is.
So. I mean, I don't know that I take a position on Article twenty.
Well, we would not want you to take a position on Article twenty yet, in any case, because you haven't yet held your public hearing, that's not until March sixth. Because in theory, you'll have as in, informed a position. Through the public hearing process.
Right, exactly, okay, good.
Four point two-six, four point two-five?
It's a five or a six?
So, I think it's five, four point two-five acres?
Okay, yeah.
So we're gonna wait until we open?
For the position on the article?
We would request that, yes.
We can vote on Article nineteen.
I'm still ongoing hearing.
So.
Oh, that's true.
So, so, wait, 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 am I misunderstanding, discussion to take positions, are you looking for us to take any positions on Town Meeting or were we just able to discuss which ones we would like to take?
Haven't been requested to take any, but if there's any articles on there that you feel really strongly about, that you would like to take a position on?
We took the time.
Yeah?
We will take, and we will take the other two.
Except, we don't want you to take action on the two zoning bylaw amendments until you've concluded your public hearing.
Closed, gotcha.
Why don't we continue this discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seeing it's quarter of eleven.
Yeah. And it's not getting, it's not getting any easier, we are sledding uphill now, so.
We don't need a motion for this to continue, do we? Yeah, we continue discussion to take positions at Annual Town Meeting or take any other actions related there too, to the March sixth meeting.
Do we need to continue?
You don't need to, it's not a.
And we said, and the same for Carl Thompson, right?
No.
Carl Thompson, yeah.
That's A and R application. In fact, you will run out of time to take action, if you don't take action, they're gonna be able to just.
Does it anyway.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
And some A and R, and a pit?
Yes, sir.
I think we're moving into that topic now, yeah?
Okay.
So we're on general business topic F, PB twenty-three oh-six, A and R seven Carl Thompson Road. Who is it, Joe or Jeff, who has the background on this?
I, I'll take this. So what before you is essentially a perimeter plan that shows the existing lot with the exception that it meets the criteria for A and R and it has the requisite language such that it can be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So, and we did confirm with Council, they also believe this is eligible, meets the criteria for A and R, and so we would recommend that the board endorse the A and R plan. And again, that just means you're finding it's not a subdivision, which, it's not a subdivision.
It's got access for emergency vehicles.
Okay.
Meets all the Rs and.
Yep.
It's an existing lot.
Yep. So, sounds fairly cut and dry.
I move that we approve PB two-three zero-six, A and R seven Carl Thompson Way as, I'm sorry, Carl Thompson Road as an approval not required lot. Not create any additional lots and there's no opinion on, what will we say on this, there's no opinion on zoning?
Yeah, no determination as to whether it's intended or implied.
Very good.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, um, to find PB twenty-three oh-six to be, uh, I guess affirmative that, that it's A and R, it's an A and R lot. All those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Minutes.
Yes, we do have, uh, plans for.
Senator, I'm sure we do, yes, okay. We have the meeting minutes from December fifth, twenty-twenty-two, is there a motion to approve the minutes of December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two?
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I had a couple of comments on, uh, December five. Page three.
You've been trying to leave for an hour and a half. All right, uh, sorry, Kate.
Page three, line one-twenty-nine, it talks about the Balsams Homeowners Association will eventually request the removal of the Bachi Court. And I just wanted to add a sentence that, um, Hollister requested confirmation as to whether the Bachi Court was part of the CBA approval. So that technically doesn't get lost.
Hmm.
And then I have a question on line one-thirty-six, let me see why, if I can get down there. Oh, nothing, I was just curious how the draft action plan went.
Correspondence.
That's right.
Finally got.
It's already approved.
Approved.
I didn't, was it in correspondence?
I think so.
There was something in there.
I don't, I don't.
I don't know if it was that, though.
I don't see it, I'll look.
Anything else?
Nope, that was it.
Anybody else have comments on the December fifth meeting minutes? Bob?
Yeah, I had one comment, it's a, um, just grammatical, I don't know what the item is, but on the bottom of page four of seven, under general business, you've got. you've got G, considering offer request. What is the G a reference to?
Where was that, Bob, I'm sorry?
Uh, line 187, December 5th meeting minutes.
Oh, it was Agenda Item G.
Yeah, Agenda Item, Agenda Item G, Bob, I guess.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm, I'm good with that, that's all, that's all I was wondering.
Okay.
I, oh.
Uh, all right, um, well, if, I don't have any comments on these minutes. Uh, so, uh, we have a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor say aye. Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. As amended.
Yes.
Thank you, Kate. Uh, we now have minutes from December 19th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
I'm moved.
Uh, motion and a second to approve the December 19th minutes, any discussion?
Nope.
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 Bob?
No.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the December 19th minutes, all those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Um, there was some correspondence.
No, we have to-
More set.
January 9th, is there another one in here?
Yeah.
January 9th, yes, sir.
scrolled right by it, hold on. Oh, yes, there it is. Meeting minutes from January 9th, uh, is there a, um, motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Motion, second, all those, uh, okay, any discussion?
No.
Yep, great, uh, all those in favor of approving the January 9th meeting minutes say aye. Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Epstein.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Uh, we have some correspondence.
So that action plan, I was thinking the action plan was the, uh, the one for multiple, that thing along with, um-
MBTA communities?
Yeah, that's what I was-
It is.
It's approved.
Congratulations, Jeff.
Congratulations.
So it got, but this says December 28th, and I thought you were going to the Select Board in January.
We were ahead of the game.
Yeah, we, uh, they were meeting in person, so I jumped at the opportunity.
Right, excellent, that, that's what confused me. I thought this was housing authorities.
At the time, you were correct, that was our intention, but then wanted to-
Excellent.
End it as quickly as possible.